Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Cities of Socorro, Texas. It is October 7th, 2025, 5:34 PM. We call this meeting to order.
Thank you. Item number two, Establishment of Coro. Andrew Arroyos.
Here.
Jaber Estrada.
Here.
Julie Dominguez.
Here.
Osvaldo Reza.
Here.
Yolanda Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum with five commissioners present. Item number three, Open Forum. Alfredo, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Mr. Ruben.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Mr. Ruben Borrego, if you would like to step to the podium. Mr. Borrego? And you do have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Thank you, City Council, Engineers, City Employees. I'm coming in cause of a city ordinance that was approved in November of last year. Either November of last year or October of last year. And the city ordinance has not been good at this time. And the reason is that they keep on violating that city ordinance. The city ordinance is junk cars that are in trailers, forty-foot trailers, or twenty-foot trailers that are being set on the streets of Socorro. The streets of the new additions, of the new additions. I'm talking about the Inorn states and the states around it. If we don't get that taken care of, it's an accident that's gonna happen. There's, there are streets that are cosizing with the main street. When you're getting out, you can't see who's coming in. You see to your left, you can't see. There's junk cars piled up. There's gonna be an accident where a kid is in his bike or anything, and somebody's gonna take him. Also, the city police are doing their best. There's a person that's been cited for about eight times to ten times. If you know anybody that has junk cars and are doing that, let me tell you, that's a $4,000 or $5,000 operation per month, I mean, per week. They have about $15,000 or $20,000 a month. It comes a lot of money on that, so they can pay their tickets. But the, the bad thing about it is they can cite them so much, the city police. Mr. Rojas has been doing a good job. Problem is that the citations keep on going. We need to cite him in the court system. We need to cite him and get out of the magistrate here in Socorro because he's contracted out, I believe, he's contracted out. We need to cite him in the county judge with Luran. We need to get out up here and cite him at the county judge. Or make the magistrate get him cited more. Or do a restriction because he's conducting a business. A business in a residential area, not only in him. There's a couple of people that are doing that. And that's not, that's not what you want. You're coming in with boom on estates. You're gonna have people running, running businesses on the, on the residential. I got a $325,000 home there. And people pay their taxes there. But what's going on is that there's no restrictions. The city ordinance can do so much, but we need to do more. We need to really address the mayor and the city council. This is a beautiful area. The states are beautiful. But they think that because they're in Socorro, they think this is a lower value where they can do whatever they want. That's why you have city ordinance. You guys approved it. I brought it up, and I brought it up for months and months and months. And they approved it. But when they gave them the citation, ten times he pays the citation, but he needs to go to court. They need to send him to court. But there's a lot of that going on in the states, a lot of that. And I'm afraid that one of these days, there's gonna be a terrible accident where a kid is gonna get, or any pedestrian, or even a vehicle coming out to the street. We have to come up seven feet before we can see the street too clear because the junk cars are there. So that's what I'm advising you. You can please put it in the agenda. I'll be coming back just to, to see what you guys will do. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number four, Consent Agenda.
Is that all who we have that wanted to speak?
Yes. On item number three, Open Forum, yes, that would be all who we have to speak. Item number four, Consent Agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion made by Osvaldo Reza, second by Julie Dominguez, to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain?
I'll abstain.
Motion carried. Regular Agenda. Item five, Presentation and Discussion on the Harmony Desalating, Desalating Project in Socorro, Texas. Ms. Quimido?
Thank you, Marian Larin Quimido, City Planner. Good afternoon, residents, commissioners. Our first item on the regular agenda is a presentation by Quantum Way with Harmony Desalting to give you a presentation on his project and the opportunity for Socorro to participate in this exciting endeavor. With that, I'll introduce you to Quantum Way of Harmony Desalting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Quantum Way. I'm the founder of Harmony Desalting. We are a desalination startup based in Boston, and we've won some grant funds from the federal government to pilot an innovative desalination technology. And that's what I'm here to talk to you all about today.
Maieras Taldivar?
Great, thank you very much. So what's the point of this project? This is an aerial view of the property at 232 South Navara's, taken probably November of last year. I have Marty Loyah here, representative of the property owner, Ralph Loyah, is here. And as you can see, currently, this spot is basically empty. One of the reasons it's empty is there's not a consistent, reliable supply of fresh water, but there is a well located on this property. The well has saline water, and the point of our technology is to remove the salts, make this water useful for irrigation. And basically, what we plan to do here is to set up a desalination container, remove the salts from that water, about 4,000 gallons per day. And this would allow the Loyahs to grow wine grapes on the property. This process would require the installation of a small brine pond in that corner of the property right there. I want to stress, it's important to note that the reason we've been granted funds from the federal government is our technology is an improvement on the state of the art. If you were to use a conventional desalting technology, the brine pond would be much bigger, and the desalting container would produce much less fresh water. But over the past several months, we've met with the A1 Subcommittee. We've heard some of the concerns of some of the residents who I think are here today. And I think primarily, these concerns come down to pollution, noise, odor, and well depletion. And, and we hear these concerns. We thank those who brought up these concerns for raising them. We had not addressed these concerns as diligently as we should have, but we have, we've revisited these concerns, and I think we have, we have mitigation measures and the answers to each of these concerns. So I want to quickly walk you through those. First and foremost is pollution. The design of this pond is governed by TCEQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. It mandates that the pond is designed by a Texas professional engineer. And most importantly, that pond must include a plastic liner. And the point of this plastic liner is to ensure that none of that brine seeps below the water to get, get at the water table. The salts, solid salts will accumulate at the bottom of the pond every several years or so. As those salts accumulate, they'll be scraped away and sent to the landfill. In accordance with the TCEQ permit, this pond will be inspected weekly to make sure that there are no overflows or leaks. So I think Texas has a good regulation to ensure that there's no pollution stemming from this brine. In regards to the noise, our engineers have looked, we have a preliminary list of equipment, and they've looked at the noise levels generated by that equipment. Here is a decibel level chart. You can range from jet engine at 140 decibels to normal conversation, about 60 to 70 decibels. We estimate that our sound levels will be right in this range. Basically, when it comes down to it, our loudest equipment, the pumps and motors will be placed inside of a steel container. There will be sound insulating foam inside that container to absorb the noise. And basically, that will take down the loudest equipment from 90 decibels down to, inside the container, to a level of about 60 decibels on the outside. This 60 decibel level is about the level of noise that is generated by a mini-split air conditioner. We well have a mini-split air conditioner which will be generating noise outside the container, but I think this is probably comparable to the noise that is generated by many air conditioners in the surrounding area. Furthermore, we will install sound level sensors for continuous monitoring to monitor how much noise our system is producing. In regards to odor, this is a, this is a good concern. We've taken a closer look at this. The brine that will be sitting in the pond is concentrated well water, and we do have a water quality analysis that has been taken on that well water. This is a sample from that analysis. This analysis is available on a public website, which we've launched. The URL will be included later in the presentation. The most obvious potential source of odor is ammonia in the well water coming in at a level of 0.3 milligrams per liter. This is far below the odor detection threshold of ammonia, five to 53 milligrams per liter. But we'll be going through, as part of this odor detection plan, all of the, all of constituents within the well, well water, identifying what are the odor detection limits, and this will inform what our water recovery limits are to ensure that we don't concentrate these constituents to the point where they'll be detectable. We'll also be including aeration and chlorine dosing to kill potential bacteria which may cause odors, and we're also investigating, similar to the noise level sensors, air quality monitoring sensors, so that we can have an objective measure of this. Finally, well depletion. This is, you know, this is a very important concern. This is something that we are learning more about. We certainly don't want to deplete this well. The whole point of the project is to produce a reliable source of fresh water for the property owner. We certainly don't want to run that well dry for the property owner or any of the neighbors. So this is still an issue we're investigating. We invite, if anyone knows more about this than we do, we'd love to work with them to identify a sustainable well withdrawal rate. But we plan to run specific capacity tests to help identify this rate. Our desalination container will be solar powered, so it'll be only running a portion of the day. We feel there is a good chance we will not be running this well dry, but in any case, we're committed to adjusting our operations to produce a stable and sustainable source of fresh water. As I mentioned before, we have launched a project website. This website is live. It's being continuously updated, and it includes project information, contact information, frequently, frequently asked questions, and a data dashboard. We plan to update this, continue updating this website. As the project goes into operation, there will be weekly inspections of the pond. All of that will go on the website. There will be quarterly water analysis of the wastewater in accordance with TCEQ. That would go on the website as well. And finally, we understand desalination is something that is maybe unfamiliar to people here. So tomorrow, we will be holding an outreach event at the property from 3:00 to 6:30. We have brought a small desalination unit, which we plan to operate there. We also plan to produce brine samples. People can, you know, see for themselves if there is an odor associated with this brine. So invite, you know, anyone here who's concerned about this. Invite you to come and see here and smell it for yourself. I'll be there to answer whatever questions you have about the desalination container and the evaporation pond. But we really do want to work with the community here and make sure that we're doing this project right because we do believe this is a pilot, this is a pilot project, and we do see potential for a much larger project to help produce a sustainable agriculture supply for many, many farmers here. So I think I've taken up enough time. My contact info is here. I'll be here tomorrow at the demonstration event, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
I have a question. I ask a question. How large is the pond? I was trying to see if it was.
Yeah, the pond as currently designed, the preliminary drawings are on the website. I believe it's .08 acres is the surface area of that pond.
And it's like a two-acre-plus property?
Correct.
Are you gonna build this, right?
Yeah.
And how about the fencing around these properties? Is there fencing that you're gonna put for safety for kids that might get in there or even for the public? Is there gonna be fencing around this property?
There's chain link fence around the property.
There's a chain link fence right now around the property. And how high is that fence?
Six feet.
Six feet, okay. And you said this was a pilot program. Is this something that has been done in other parts, or are we the first?
Desalination is a technology that is, that... Desalination as a technology has been used pretty widely. When we refer to pilot, we are piloting, we base, we have a slightly different form of desalination. So the equipment is not new, but the way that we are using this equipment is new, the way of, the process that we're using is new. So desalination is done all over, all around the state of Texas and the United States, but we're doing it just a little bit differently, which is why it's called a pilot.
Okay, so this is the first time you're gonna do a different type of, of a pilot program compared to other parts of Texas that you might set this up with?
Yeah. For, for our, for our company, this is the first time doing a solar-powered desalination container. So oftentimes, desalination is powered off the grid.
Okay. And what is the success rate for you in other locations?
So since 2022, we're a very young company, but we entered, we've entered two field demonstrations. These were contests sponsored by the US government, and then a competition sponsored by the Canadian government, and we won the grand prize in both of those competitions. So I'd say, pretty good.
Quick question. In comparison to the other, other ones that you guys have done before, would you say that your, yours is better as far as like the decibels on the sound, everything with following the TCEQ rules or whatnot? I know that you guys will be inspected by them or whatnot every monthly quarter, you said?
So the, I got a couple of questions there. One is in regards to our decibel levels compared to our previous pilots. I mean, this pilot is larger than our, than most of our previous pilots, so in that regard, I'd say probably making a little more noise. In, in comparison to other desalination technologies, we do use smaller pumps. So this is, our, our process is more energy efficient. So I would say we, we do produce less noise compared to a conventional desalination technology. In regards to the TCEQ, TCEQ isn't specifically looking at us, but TCEQ has a general permit for disposal of wastewater. Evaporation ponds are, they're the most economical way of disposing of wastewater. So they sort of have a general permit, you know, you have to, there are qualifications to be eligible for this permit, but so long as you are eligible, then this is sort of a form permit that anyone in the state can use. These quarterly inspections, it's not TCEQ coming over to inspect the pond. The weekly inspections and the quarterly inspections are self, are performed, will be performed by the property owner. So weekly inspections, and these will come with checklists, which must be kept on record on site. These weekly checklists, we will upload to the project website. And then TCEQ also mandates that we analyze the wastewater each quarter. That's something that the property owner will collect and perform, and these we will also upload to the project website. Uploading to the project website is going above and beyond TCEQ requirements, but we feel, you know, we're collecting this data anyways. We're supposed to keep it on site. So in support of full transparency, we believe uploading it to the web is the way to go.
Thank you.
So I have another question. So what is the, um, your, the reason you're particularly picking this particular area?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a reason why you've chosen this particular spot? And in other locations, have you had pushback from other residents that, that are close by, or is it more isolated than this particular spot?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very fair question. I will say, this is the, this project is the furthest we've gone in terms of building infrastructure. For instance, this is the first time we've gone through the permitting and design, and hopefully the build process of building an evaporation pond. Our earlier pilots took place in test facilities. Our earlier pilots took place in test facilities, so well away from, well away from residential spots. The reason that we came here, we were awarded this project from Bureau of Reclamation. And the original proposed site was a nonprofit farm in Lockhart, Texas, just south of Austin. That was a site probably a bit more secluded. It fell through for a couple of reasons. I think the biggest reason is that property didn't actually have a well already dug. So it was gonna be very expensive to dig a well to access the salty water that they had underneath. When we found out that, but that project was supported by the local groundwater conservation district, Plum Creek. When we found out that that site fell through, you know, we, we still had these, we still had these federal funds, which were the, we were the primary contractor of, you know, it was still our job to spend those funds and test this technology. So my colleague Hague, you know, he was, he's a business developer. He's working with our company to try and sell these systems. He basically went and cold called, he looked up, you know, where in Texas is water the most expensive? And he went and cold called various farms and eventually got in touch with Marty. We hopped on a conversation with Marty, learned about the water challenges they were facing on their properties. Flew over the following week, got to visit the site. They have been really great partners. I think they're really forward thinking, innovative, they've been very hospitable. And, you know, they were willing to in some way take a risk on us, a young company, somewhat new technology. So that's the reason we're here. I think we clearly, we've seen a need here and they were willing to host us.
Yes, and definitely a need.
Can you state?
Can you state your name, please?
Marty Loyah, definitely a need. We have the little farm there on Nevadas and then we have another one, Socorro Road. And we have three water sources to grow our produce. Unfortunately, the well water is salty. So we can only use it for pecan trees and sometimes with our fruit trees, but we have to mix it up. We cannot use it for our fresh produce. The water that we get from irrigation, flood irrigation is very dirty. So we can't use that unless we mix it up as well too. In order for us to produce produce using that irrigation water, we would have to test it for E coli once a month. So we basically are using city water to grow our produce, so you can imagine how expensive that is.
So Marty, at the present time, you are growing something on this property or is it?
Yes, if you go back to the aerial view, I don't know if you can go back.
And then I have a question for the young man. From start to finish, how long would it take in order for this project to be able to produce the fresh water?
So right now, as you can see, we, you, where the rows are, that's where we're growing the produce. In the back where there's nothing there are, we attended a meeting with some of the representatives from the state of Texas about how potential it could be for us to grow wine, not wine, grapes, grapeyards, and that's why we're hoping that this will allow us to do that.
Okay, so how long do you anticipate that from start? That you would be able to make this project produce your clean water?
Yeah, a pretty, so we're in the process of building the container at our location in Boston. That, probably most of that construction will take place in November, December, probably stretching into January. We anticipate shipping the container on site in February. It'll take probably a couple of weeks to set up. And then, you know, once we're set up and running, we'll be producing water immediately. So current timeline would be February or March of next year.
And I wanna make sure that the community understands that this isn't just for us. This is all farmers. All farmers are running into the same type of issue that they can't produce with their well waters and same problem with irrigation, it's just very dirty. Potentially, you could use the same technology, not just on farms, in area where there's no water, only a well available to the community. So potentially, this could grow into other areas as well too.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get more to it once I guess we hit the item and then we'll open up for discussion as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, public hearing for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and the rezoning of lot one and lot two, block three, police subdivision replant E, located at one zero eight zero zero and one zero eight zero eight Stacy Lane, Socorro, Texas, from R one single family residential to R two medium density residential to allow for a duplex on each property. Mr. Arroyos?
Good afternoon, everybody. We will open public hearing at six oh four.
We have no speakers that signed up, but if we may ask the public if they would like to speak on item six?
Does anybody, okay, you can go ahead and come up, you can go ahead and come up and state your name, please. And then we'll give you, okay, yes, and this is just so everybody knows, this is for the item on Stacy. Yes?
Yes.
And then, um, we're gonna give them about three minutes each?
Yes.
We'll try and keep it to about a three, three minute, three to four minute minimum or whatnot.
Good evening, commissioners, planning and zoning committee and members of the community. First of all, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Luz Martinez and this is my sister Rosa Ortega. We own the property, I own the property at ten eight hundred Stacy, the corner lot. And my sister owns the A ten eight oh eight Stacy. We're here to, we purchased those lots back in May of twenty twenty-three. And we're asking here today to help, to rezone those lots from an R one to a, from a single family to a duplex. Our goal is to sit there and, and really invest in this community. We wanna build a duplex, she'll build a duplex on her side, I'll build one on my side. The intention is these duplexes would be, it's two units, of course, and they're about eleven hundred to twelve hundred square feet each. The intention is we wanna invest in the community. We wanna build a quality rental homes with refrigerated air and stuff like that. That we're looking at about three bedrooms, two bath. And one of the things we did do a little bit differently was we went ahead and asked neighbors around the area that, that are surrounding our lots is if they were okay with that, what their opinion was and stuff like that. They actually signed off on a document that says that, you know, they were, they were for it. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Go ahead and say so, sister. Well, these are for ours, these are not for sale or anything like that. This is actually going to be income because we're getting older. And, you know, it'd be nice to have a little bit of, a little bit of an estate for retirement, especially for me, because I retire next year, sixty-six, yikes. But anyway, thank you again. We respectfully ask for your approval to rezone these properties. We wanna be very respectful of the neighbors that we have at the property that it is and the location it is. And we want to buy that, we wanna be able to build something quality. And that's why we're coming before you to, you know, to request your approval, to humbly request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. How big are your lots? It's gonna be two different lots, right?
Yes, uh-huh. Mine is over ten thousand square feet. Mine is eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two and my sister's is ten thousand seven...
It's about half an acre combined in between both?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And the duplex, so we're doing a total of two duplex, so four units total, three bed, two bath, twelve hundred per site units?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience that would like to come up for this item? So we will close public hearing at six oh eight.
Thank you. Item number seven, considering take action on the approval of the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of lot one and lot two, block three, police subdivision replant E, located at one zero eight zero zero and one zero eight zero eight Stacy Lane, Socorro, Texas, from R one single family residential to R two medium density residential to allow for a duplex on each property. Ms. Kimito?
Thank you, Miriam. Thank you, Commissioner and commission members. Item number seven, for your consideration is a rezoning request for the properties located at ten eight hundred and ten eight oh eight Stacy Drive. The representatives who you've already heard from are Luz Martinez and Rosa Ortega. The lot sizes are eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-one square feet and the second lot is ten thousand five, six square feet. The zoning is R one single family residential and currently the land is vacant. The future land use map for the city of Socorro recommends suburban residential for this property. And summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of two properties from R one to R two to allow for a duplex on each property. The planning and zoning commission recommends approval of the request. These properties are located at the corner of Odin Drive and Stacy Drive. They are zoned R one and surrounded by R one single family residential zoning. The closest R two is a little, half a block behind the applicant property. They are also very close to a mixed use of commercial C two and M one, M two in just heavy industrial along Alameda. A little information for the pool subdivision, which this, these lots are within. The pool subdivision was recorded in May of nineteen eighty-three. It had a hundred and ten lots originally. Of those, a hundred and nine are designated R one residential. One is R two, medium density residential. Two are commercial C one and eighteen are C two. This subdivision also contains eighteen vacant lots. The future land use map, according to our Socorro twenty forty comprehensive map, comprehensive plan, designates the area as suburban residential. But these residential duplexes do, are compatible to the adjoining, adjacent residential nature of the subdivision. The aerial shows the vacant lots and the surrounding residential properties. These are photographs taken from Stacy of the first lot at ten eight hundred Stacy and then the ten eight oh eight Stacy Drive lot. This photograph was taken from the intersection of Stacy and Odin looking at both lots. As it is a zoning case, property owners within two hundred feet of the property were notified of the request. Staff did not receive any notification to our office either in favor or in opposition to the request, aside from the letter of support that was signed by eight individuals included in your packet toward the end of the presentation gathered by the applicants. These are the public notices that were distributed in English and Spanish. And these are the site plans for the two lots. Access will be on Stacy. And this is the second site plan for ten eight oh eight Stacy. And the letter of support that the applicants received from their neighbors on, on Stacy and Odin. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of two properties from R one to R two to allow for a duplex on each property. With that, staff can answer any questions.
My response to that, my feelings is towards that, that those lots have been there empty for quite a bit. And both lots fall under that criteria that we had talked about with having ten thousand square feet, at least for a duplex. And since there wasn't any opposing calls or whatnot, I'm leaning towards, towards making a motion. If anybody else has any, anything else?
I second.
I mean, nobody else had any questions? So I'd like to make a motion to approve?
A nice second.
I have a motion made by Andrew Arroyos, taken by Yolanda Rodriguez to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Item number eight, public hearing for the proposed amendment to the code of ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, chapter forty-six, zoning article four, district regulations to add the district regulations for the A one agricultural zoning district. Mr. Arroyos?
Good afternoon, everybody. We will open public hearing at six fourteen.
Thank you, and...
Yeah, so I think this is the one that we've been going back and forth with for the A one.
Yes.
Changes or whatnot, so.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment in regards to the agricultural rezoning or amendment?
Yes, so we have a list and I'm gonna go through it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Give me, I'm gonna go through it. In the audience, if you will like to speak, just let, let us know yes and come to the podium. If not, then we will go to the next. Adrian Perez?
There's somebody on the back.
Someone's raising their hand on the back.
Would you like to speak? No, thank you. Would you like to speak? No, thank you. Maria Lopez? I'm sorry, yes, Maria Lopez? Would you like to speak? Thank you.
Okay, can I ask you a question? I think the voters have been, I think they've had meetings, you guys have had meetings about this or whatnot? So Mr. Fissa has, has an idea or a comment, right?
Okay, so if I may, and that's the reason why I jumped ahead, right? We've been going back and forth since June, July, doing this man, this amendment to the rezoning of agricultural, right? I wanna clarify to everybody that wants to come up and talk that it's not gonna change anything of what you currently have. The thing was that there was so much confusion in between rural land to now trying to make the category, the category official of A one, that everybody had the understanding that, oh, now it's gonna change, they're gonna mess with their agricultural zoning. It's not gonna mess with anybody. If anything, it's gonna get grandfathered. But what they're doing is now they're clarifying from today forward, if anybody wants to make any change, any addition or anything like that to their land or a property wants to get rezoned into A one, these are gonna be the new guidelines, whatever is in blue. It has nothing to do with previous owners or anybody that's already considered A one. I've been in every meeting starting since June, Ms. Kimito? I'm a farmer myself, I own a lot of agricultural land, that's why it was very important for me to be there. Most of the changes that have been there, I've even added, not that I've added myself, right? But to the fact that if you own agricultural land, you're allowed to put in RV there because a lot of the workers need a water overnight, right? So during watering season, you need to have somebody there. If you need to do a well, per se, with the grants that the government is coming in. So it's not anything negative. I kind of pretty much understand and that's why it was so important for me as well. I just wanna clarify to everybody that it's nothing that's gonna change with whatever it's already established. It's gonna be from anything here moving forward, that is gonna change. Okay, so that way, if anybody's gonna come in, be like, oh, why do we have to switch it? This is gonna affect me, yada, yada, no, no, no. And then if it does affect you for the future, there is variances on how we can come about, agree and try to work to benefit farmers. The last thing personally, me myself, standing here in front of you guys, is the last thing I wanna do is get rid of agricultural land myself. Okay, so that is my interest, that's why I'm here, I just wanted to make that public announcement. Go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Oh, oh, well, can we open it?
Yeah, it's, it's still open, just stick your name, please.
My name is Yolanda Rodriguez and I have a quick question. So this A one, I understand it's gonna, nothing's gonna be changed. But if it gets sold as agricultural, does it stay as A one? Or does it get zoned something else and then they have to change it back to agricultural?
It will, the zoning will continue the same.
The property?
The property will continue the same.
So they tell us A one, it's gonna stay as A one, they wanna rezon it? Or as for a different kind of zoning, they have to go through this whole process?
That's only if they're gonna rezon it, huh? Everything would stay the same.
All right, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Marty Loyah, I'm glad you clarified that because I know there's been a lot of confusion. Me, as a farmer, it's very important that we get our A one zoning back. Right now, we're kinda in limbo. There's no zoning for the farmers right now. And we had A one, there was a problem or an issue that when we, when the city went digital, it got lost. We don't know why, but it was A one toward the farmers, so it's very, very important that we get it back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead. That's okay.
My name is Ruben Borrego. In agriculture land, some of the builders that are building around, I've been here before and they say, have you had any kind of water rights or irrigation rights? Have you talked to the people around you? Some, some developers haven't. They don't know that we still have the water rights and they're, they're in their property because they bought it. It was changed from agriculture to, to residential now. But nobody did advise us that it was gonna be residential. So the water lines are in his property and our property. So he has to respect our irrigation rights, of course. The thing is that when they come up here, they tell you, well, we, we, we talked to the neighbors and all this stuff. But it really, there's nothing that says, there's a letter saying that I have water rights and they, they have not talked to the neighbors. So I suggest that you do tell them, I need something in writing that you talked to several neighbors or your neighbors around. So you'll know that the water rights are respected because they're the ones that changing it to residential. We haven't changed it to residential. It's still agricultural.
I'll, I'll go ahead and add to your question. So no, that, that is incorrect. The, the way it works is this way. They buy, developers buy land from farmers, right? Then the farmers turn it over to developers for, to develop, right? And then at that point, they make agreements with Water District. The, the water rights are sold to lower, I'm, I'm, Lower Valley in this case per se, here in the valley, right? They are the ones that pick up the water rights. They are sold. At the time that you purchase a residential property, you no longer are entitled to those water rights. Now, if there's an easement running through your property, that has to be respected, but Lower Valley picks up that responsibility of maintaining those ditches, whether they run right next to your property, behind your property, or sometimes even through your property. At the time you go close at the title company, you will receive a survey. That survey will dictate if you have any easements. It does not mean that you own the water rights because those water rights have been way before sold at the time that that property was gonna be developed. Anything in the city of Socorro or Lower Valley under half an acre at the time of sale is no longer getting respected for water rights unless you address it before closing. And all that has to get addressed through Water Improvement District, which is off, is right off of Alameda. So if you own less than half an acre, not because you're next to residential land, but at the time that property was developed, all those water rights have been sold.
No, there are five acres.
And, and I will add also that in any property where there is any irrigation, whether it's a community canal or whether it's, belongs to the WID or whatnot, it, it, it's almost impossible for them to skip that. It's part of the procedure of them as developers, right? It's gotta go through the WID.
So I gotta go talk to them?
Well, you, you, yes, you, you can talk to the Water Improvement District, yes, they will give you the answers that you need. But I, I can guarantee you that nobody can, can come in and just take your water rights, rights away. It's gotta go through a certain process and it'll go through the WID, Lower Valley Water District if they purchase the water rights or whatnot, but, yeah.
That is something that is recorded on your deeds, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead and come up, sir.
Yeah, on this item, if you'd like to speak.
Oh, okay, so if it, if it's not on this item, then you have to wait for that next item. Yes. Yes, we have.
I can wait till ten.
Sorry, item number five is just the presentation, okay? Anyone that would like to speak?
Name is Steven Ingrid. Uh, I live over on ten seven zero one West Burt Road. I live right next to Canal. Okay, there's Canal Road that runs right next to my house. And I'm trying to find out what I can do. I've talked to the Water Department over there off Alameda. Uh, they seem to keep blowing me off. My retaining wall, when I moved in there, I didn't build a wall, it was already there, been there for twenty years. Every year, that wall keeps going like this. I've gotten blocks knocked off of it. Down far, there's a bunch of blocks knocked off of it. If I didn't have any tree stumps there that were there to keep that wall up, I think that whole wall would fall over. So I don't want one of their tractors coming and the next thing you know, it caves in on my property. And then I, they try to sue me. I need to find out what I can do to, to do something about it. Since they're blowing me off, I gotta get a lawyer or what?
I, I would probably say maybe get ahold of the city of Socorro, right? Maybe and...
The Water Department over there off Alameda, right there in Clint?
Yeah, that's the WID, correct, but, but.
Right. Yeah, because, yeah, because I've been trying to deal with this for over a year now. I mean, every, my wall is like this. I've got pictures of it, it's falling, it's falling. You know, their tractors come and roll the, the center of the canal down.
Who's tractors?
The Water Department tractors, yeah, there's, there's off-road vehicles, there's cars that go right by, on that road. I mean, it's ten feet, the canal's ten feet from my property probably. You know, with the road or whatever. And it keeps, it's already caved in some of the, the block wall. I don't have money, I'm on a fixed income, I'm retired, you know? And another, another thing I have a complaint about is, I've called about it is where that Socorro scrap metal is on the corner of Burt Road and Horizon right there. You know who, whose it is, it's the Gondolas or whatever, they own that property. Alright, they, I've called the city of Socorro, they say, well, it's a tech stop problem. Well, if it's a tech stop problem, then their entrance to that property should be on Horizon, not on Burt Road. Because that road is real skinny right there. It's, it's super skinny. I've had to stop two, three, four times. I don't know how many other people had, had, have to stop there to wait for that big rig, end up to come out of that street right there. You know, plus all those center divider things you guys put down, it really, really messed us up from getting out of that. With all the traffic now with all these houses built on North Loop. All those duplexes that are built on Horizon right there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of traffic, you know, and then they, they don't even have a turn-in lane to get into those duplexes there. So they're coming into traffic to get into there. There's gonna be some accidents right there, I'm telling you. And I don't want to get rear-ended because that street is tight right there to come in. When I turn to go right to go down to my house, I'm gonna go all the way to end. If there's a big rig there, I gotta stop. I can't, either that or go down the street and then come in, and I, I shouldn't have to do that. Those big rigs should be coming in through Horizon into their property, not on Burt Road, not on that residential road, it's skinny. You know what I'm saying?
That is a good point. That is a good point on that one.
So if you, if you'd like to, you, you can, like after the meeting, we, we can meet with you or you can meet with somebody from.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know.
Yeah, we'll bring that up on the Commissioner's report.
And then they leave third, I had to get a tire for my son's car. He was going back, he goes to Our Lady Lake in San Antonio. At five o'clock in the morning, he leaves. Dad, my tire pressure thing gauge came on. He had a big giant bolt that was from that scrap truck. They leave mud in the road, there's trash, that yard looks like crap, I mean, you know, come on.
Yes, sir.
Looks like the ghetto.
Good points, we'll definitely jot it down.
You know, and I know those guys have pool in this town because they were the mayor and they bet you, I know, believe me, I've been here twenty years.
Things have changed, though, things have changed. But thank you for your, your comment.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
So.
No, sir.
No, no, that had nothing to do with the text.
Mr. Arroyos, if I may ask, the people that we have on phone, if they would like to speak?
Okay.
One person.
We have one person?
Go ahead.
Hi, Margaret, hi, ma'am. Um, he was talking about the rock walls. And one thing, we have a rock wall build between Car Road and Worsham on the new housing on North Loop. The rock walls are slanted and some are eight feet tall. And the, the canal runs from Worsham all the way, almost, I mean, to Car Road. And since they built that canal, the canal started having five feet, so we can walk and take something because it's a long canal. Some part of it is two feet or one feet to the wall. Some parts, you can see the bottom of the rock wall. Because with the rain and, you know, it takes, and it's loose dirt because those have been built come long ago, five years ago, six years ago. So all that dirt is moving. And, uh, uh, the rock wall is right in back of my property where it drains. I had a lot of problems because the gophers, the water runs down to the drainage and it threw like two car lanes side to side down the rock wall and it went down to my canal. And we had asked for it to be paved because we have a lot of kids going back there partying. They went to my property and broke the windows in my truck, in the car. Cops couldn't do anything because I have no cameras and putting up a fence. But that rock wall, we don't have no access in it because there's been a big problem on people, the city water owns half of it, of the canal to the, and I think to the rock wall. The weeds are so tall, sometimes taller than the rock wall, plus they go in the canal because they're falling in. And the, the Water District doesn't clean the top of the canal, they just clean at the bottom and one feet up to the side, that's it. So, kids are partying there. There's, uh, some vandalism because we already had a lot of, uh, our animals attacked. Uh, I had dog come and kill my collaring chickens, they came and attacked my other dogs and all kinds of problems. But one thing about the rock wall, it's very, very slanted and it is corroded at the bottom. So that means with the rain, it's loosening, it's to hold itself up. And, uh, and also it's a big fire hazard because if you go back to now, there's a lot of dry weeds.
I'm sorry, what address was that?
Excuse me?
What address was?
I live in eleven six five nine North Loop, but it's not on North Loop, it's in back of the housing. But me and my neighbor are considered North Loop. And the rock wall is from Car Road almost to Worsham. And, and it, it's, you know, there's a lot of kids, there's beer cans there, there's partying. And it's not a safety because the rock wall, as I remember, is leaning towards the canal.
Let me, I, I will let me make a comment and I totally understand you guys and, and I'm, I'm fighting that fight with you all. I got duplexes built right behind my agricultural land and I have the same rock walls and all that. Now, it is not an issue for the city of Socorro that pertains to Lower Valley and it's a fight that you constantly have to be on it. Let me, let me just clarify it. I think unfortunately, right, and I mean, I hope it never happens, an accident is gonna have to happen before they do something, right? Because with the water, with the wash offs, with the runoff, the weeds, I mean, you get galites with, with tree trunk size that are lifting up rock walls and, and whatnot. But unfortunately, those are rights that are for Lower Valley Water District. Now, everything, they, they created those rock walls to leave the easement in the middle of the ditch. But Lower Valley goes and cleans that ditch, correct? So that you guys can irrigate?
They cleaned the bottom part, but all the over from the top is going in.
That is a fight that I constantly have, it's not, it's not a solution, unfortunately, it's not with the city. Now, can we talk to the board of Lower Valley? Yes, but I think we have to start as a community, attending their board meetings to tell them to address that. Not here with the city because the city has no right over that.
Okay, well, the city has no right to that. But how about the contracts before all that was built and the housing that built the rock walls? Why don't they have any responsibility? Because they left that canal, they left that rock wall and, and there's sometimes there's not even two feet to walk at the side to irrigate. It's a, it's a very long canal.
The, the easements were dictated on the survey, so the rock wall belongs to the homeowner. At the moment that the homeowner closes per the survey, he's the one to accept and sign off whether the rock walls are to his standard or not. So at the moment that those rock walls fall off, that's responsibility now of the owner of the property, which again, he's gonna throw that ball to Lower Valley. And it's something juggling. Your right as a resident where you're at is that you should not have any obstruction whatsoever of the water flow. That is it, right? You shouldn't be cleaning that ditch, you shouldn't be walking through that ditch, there shouldn't be no walkway access. The only right you have to that water is that you should have no obstruction of water flowing to that ditch for you to receive water at your property. If there is a flow, that's, if there is an obstruction flow, that's where they will tend to you immediately, I guarantee you that. Pictures and emails to them will get it solved. Now, it not being clean or anything like that, that is a fight that I have to, as much clean as I want to do it, not only that, residents will throw their trash bags, will throw their stuff. You just have to call Lower Valley, they will go and clean it, but it doesn't mean that they're gonna leave it the prettiest looking, unfortunately. We have to go and attend their board meetings.
Lower Valley has very limited staff and they don't clean that canal maybe twice a year.
During the watering season, yeah.
So.
It's a battle that we're all fighting, really, really. I'm with you on it and, and as a farmer, I tell you, I have about maybe two hundred yards of residential ditch through culverts as well before I get my water. So I know exactly your feeling.
It takes two hours or, or three hours for the water to get to my house.
From the gate to get to water, yeah, that's exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No?
We're gonna go ahead and ask the ones that are on the phone.
Oh, on the phone, that's right.
If you want to go ahead and mute the ones we have on the phone?
Everyone's unmuted.
Everyone's muted. Do we have anyone that would like to speak via phone?
Uh, no, ma'am, no coming, coming, are you here?
No, ma'am. Thank you. Muted.
No comment either.
Unmuted.
Close public hearing at six thirty-six. Would you like to make a motion? Close public hearing for item number eight, correct? This is, got to close public hearing for number. So we're on item eight, correct?
We're on item nine. We're barely gonna start item nine.
Okay, I want to make a motion to listen to public hearing on item ten before we consider and take action and, and before we're asked to vote on item nine.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. So I'm just gonna repeat the motion, I have a motion made by David Estrada, second by Ozvaldo Ressa to move item number ten, public hearing, um, before discussing item number nine. For item number ten, if Mr. Arroyos may open public hearing?
We will open public hearing at six thirty-seven.
Could we take a vote on that? Oh, okay.
Um, if, yes, for item number ten.
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, Board. My name is Ray Perez.
Can you please? Can you, can you, um?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to state that I'm not against agriculture and I'm not against farmers. I'm for development of new technology and new innovation as far as ga, getting water out of the ground and stuff like that. I've spoken to fifty residents and I have a PDF file that I sent. You distributed, okay? And so I've got signatures and a petition here of fifty people that I've spoken to in the residential area. Every single one of them, except for one, was. Every single one of them, except for one, was against this motion, okay? The only one that wasn't for it was neither for or against it, okay? I have some pretty significant people, like the father of the mission signed that he's against it. He's number seven on that list. El Borrego, he's a historian in San Elisario and does the mission trail, he's also against it. Paul Guerra, in the school district, against it, okay? I've spoken to several neighbors and a lot of them can't come to office. Some of them are either elderly or the homes in some, to some extent, look abandoned near the mission, okay? From what I understand, there is, there is grant money, three hundred thousand dollars for this initiative. None of this is in it for the residents, okay? The only one that is gonna benefit from this is the applicant. This is a good project, and I'm gonna keep saying this, but it's not a good project there. It's a good project for somewhere that there is no residents and there is no mission. We are totally against this experimental idea in this area. It is already established as a residential area and the property is residential at this point. This is a pilot experiment, how is this going to benefit any of the residents? Applicants are only after grant money. Residents are totally against experimenting in our neighborhood. Now, last October, a forty-page analysis of the water was conducted on October twenty-fourth, twenty-four. The study was conducted by ESSCO. Results from this analysis show no salt parameter, okay? There is no NACL. There is salt ions such as sodium and chloride, but there's no salt. Everybody knows that salt is NACL. You look at that forty-page report, there is no salt. Okay, I spoke to Joe Concha, I spoke to Johannes McCann, I can't pronounce his last name, McCann, help me? He's an engineer from ESSO Environmental. Okay, I looked at the TECQ website and no permits have been pulled for any of these tests, any of this environmental, any of these environmental studies. This site is three hundred and forty feet away from the Socorro Mission. And as Rudy Cruz mentioned when I spoke to him, he said, "We need to stay away from disrupting the mission in every way." With regards to equipment and environmental pollution. Now, it's subjective how much pollution there is and how much noise. For someone, it may be a lot of noise, but for other people, those desert valves may be high. That is a subjective subject. Another issue is water tables, okay? Once you start drilling in for irrigating for grapes, for example, grapes take a lot of water. And the problem I have with it is there's been cases in Clint about five years ago where the water tables actually collapsed and structures were actually falling due to pulling water out of those veins, okay? One of my other concerns is property values. Everybody knows that agricultural land is worth less than residential. This is going to affect the property values in the area. Brine smells terrible. I have webpages that I've researched and read about and there's nothing but bad things that come from brine and from desultinization. There was an article on K Fox News on nine twenty-five, twenty-five about a desultinization plan that is taking place here in El Paso. And nothing but bad environmental impacts were discussed, okay? So there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of testing that needs to be done. And the question is, has anybody from this board or anybody from city planning done their due diligence to check, to ensure that there's not gonna be any other effects for the residents? Because having fifty signatures of people that don't want this is significant. And I sent the city planning the copy so that they could upload it, but I have a copy here if anybody would like to see the copy.
No, we got it.
We have it?
Yeah.
So it is a good idea, but I don't think it's a good idea there for two reasons. It's a residential area and the mission is less than three hundred and forty feet away from the, from the proposed area. So it's a good idea, but they gotta find somewhere else. I think it's a good idea, but somewhere else, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in reference to this item?
Hi, I'm Tammy Mudiell, I'm at Two Fifty Marquez. So I haven't recently brought on board with this rezoning issue. And I listened to the presentation and Mr. Betis did raise some of the concerns that I had as well. But other than everything that he did mention, I'm not gonna rehash, I have similar concerns. And the effects on the well water, I mean, it was inconclusive on the presentation on what the effects were in the well water. How it's gonna deplete it, what's gonna be the after effects? I mean, if this is a pilot project and like Mr. Betis said, it's a great idea, but it is a residential area. It's too close to the church, it's too close to his property, my property, everybody else's property in that area. And what benefit is it to the community? Is everyone gonna have access to that water? I mean, I'm just curious, those were my concerns that I didn't get from the presentation. So I wanted to raise my concerns, if you're gonna rezone, these are issues that need to be addressed. And I think it needs to be conclusive on what the effects are on the well water before it's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if I may, add a little bit, and both, right, ma'am and Mr. Betis? This is, this is where I'm at as a farmer again, right? So if y'all remember years ago, Socorro used to live off and some even still live off of well water. A lot of people still live off of well water. It doesn't mean that there wasn't well water before. Now, where do I stand as a farmer where property is residential? Yes, it's a pilot program, it's something you don't want there next to, to the residents. But where do I stand with the applicant? It's the fact that these are grants from the government. Every time as a city we continue rejecting these grants, then they're no longer gonna look at us. We no longer get chosen for the government to say, "You know what, they're very pro-city," right? Now, what if, how do we make it a win-win situation for residents? And we'll get to it once we discuss the item, right? Where it comes to the residents and where it also comes to the applicant, like you said. What benefits do the residents have? Okay, maybe not a benefit, but what if we give them the benefit of the doubt that if it's something that we all encourage as a city to try to make our city grow so that we can have the government look more at us for grants? But if it's something that doesn't work out, we can automatically terminate it, right? We won't know if it works until we give it a try. We won't know if the government's gonna give us anymore until we give it a try. I can assure you though, once I peeked into USDA, I got a lot of help from USDA just for being Hispanic. That doesn't mean that being a small city, we're not gonna get the help from the government. This is grants that the government is giving. Now, you ask me, why don't you put it in your house? If I get chosen, I'd put it in my house, but maybe I don't have the well that they have. Okay, I'll get right with you, Mr. Betis, right now. Will I put it in my house? If you tell me it's gonna be a benefit because I'm gonna have cleaner water? There's people, we gotta understand, there's people living in their properties that still live off of well water because they have no city water, right? If this is gonna clean the water and this is gonna help any future farmers, why not give it a try? If that's the only option we currently have, but also protecting the residents that if this is chaotic because the city, none of us know what we're gonna get into, but we can, I mean, I don't know if to use the right terminology, but if we can terminate it within three months, six months, because it's something completely of what we didn't expect, then why not give that assurance, but at least we're not telling the government? No, no, no government, don't look at us because we're so negative, we're so close-minded, we don't wanna do it. That's just where I'm at, I'm trying to conserve agricultural land, being pro it, but also respecting the peace of the residents. You get me? That, that's my standpoint.
Excuse me ma'am?
If you wanna speak to the mic, just so that everything gets recorded, both of you, please.
You were discussing the well water, it was inconclusive, they don't know how it's gonna affect it, is it gonna deplete it? Like you said, people are living off of that well water. You know, people still utilize well water there. I have a well. I said, how is it gonna affect, is it gonna deplete it? I mean, I think those questions need to be answered. I understand this is a great thing for the city. I mean, I think it's a great program, not necessarily for the city, but yes, somewhere else, you know?
But the well, the well is currently active on that property, it's being used. It doesn't mean they're gonna pump out more water than what already is being used. It just means they're gonna clean the water that is being pumped out. I'd be totally for it with you if you say, "Oh, we're gonna do a new drilling there, we're gonna go way deeper than everybody else and this is a well in the residential area that is not nonexistent." They're only tapping into something that is existing. Now, of course, I'm not saying I'm pro for it, I'm very confused when it comes to it and I've been hearing about it for past months. It's something that they're only getting that water that they're already pumping and filtering it out. Now, the brine is what I'm concerned on, that pond is what I'm concerned on, but that's where I wanna give the advantage to the residents in speaking out and how are you guys protected? How can you guys come back and be like, "Hey, that stinks, we need that out, we need it canceled." Because the usage of the water, that water's already being pumped out and using it to be what, to be irrigated already. They're already, it's not like they're gonna consume any more water. If anything, they might do drip system to conserve more water. So i- it's, it's just filtering that water in regards to the system because I did do the research, like Mr. Betis said. I, brine water, all it reminds me of is oil field, that's all you're gonna have, right? Stink you, this and that, but the pond he showed, it's not gonna be near as big that, might be a little bit smaller, right? Fencing, great questions. It's just, it's something we have to look at the positive outcome of. And all these are great questions and I myself as a commissioner up here wanna make sure how are residents protected? With it being a win-win situation both to the city, to farmers, to not leaving everybody out, to where the government says, "Hey, these people are very pro-new ideas, let's continue sending money that way." Because I know for a fact that USDA, they are looking at us right now just especially because we're Hispanics and there's no new farmers that wanna take on that. So there's a lot of grants out there, if you take the initiative to go ahead and do it.
Well, and like you said, there's a lot of grants out there, so, you know, another grant, I'm not familiar, again, like I'm new to this. But my concern was just on the presentation when it was inconclusive about how it affects the well water and how does it affect the wells around that? I don't know, it's not in the presentation, so those were my concerns.
I agree.
And that's the community. Is it a detriment? Yes, does it hurt the community in that sense? And that's what I'm worried about.
And I, I wanna make sure everybody understands that if we can, and we have legal here on board, right? And if, if we can put something in writing to where we can protect the residents and it's in writing, I'm all for it. But I also don't want the city not to be looked at for all these grants.
Understandably, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betis.
The only thing that I didn't? The only thing I didn't mention was that the people in the whole area within two hundred feet of that property and abroad do not want this. The grant money, it's wrong to just take grant money because we're gonna take grant money because we need grant money or because of our careers. We're gonna do this because it's gonna look good on our resume, okay? That is totally wrong. It's wrong to take the money just because we want the grant money. There's other places to put these type of test pilots, not there, not near the mission, not near the residents. It's already a residential home, it's not agriculture.
Good point, good point, thank you.
I just wanna assure the community that we are, basically our feet are to the fire. We're gonna have to be testing weekly. And we have to report it to the Bureau of Regulation. We, we're not gonna be able to do this without providing that kind of data. So if anything goes away, we're gonna address it or maybe, you know, if we don't continue. It's a pilot project, it's a test. It doesn't have to be permanent, if it doesn't work out, but at least give us a shot at it.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Hello, I'm a resident of Socorro and I live in Carro.
I'm so sorry, if you could state your name?
Alfonso.
So number, can you give us your name, sir? Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Joseca Tanyan. And my question is for the agricultural land, I have a agricultural land. Two and a half acres I use half for living home, family. And the other, the two acres are the agriculture. My question is that I, I don't understand why the land changed when you wanted to divide your land to prepare for your family or exit, uh, exit things, you know, you can wanna, wanna do in the future with the land. I have a problem there, there, I wanted to sell half of the land early in the past years and they didn't let me sell, sell it because I'm in a land, what does that mean? I mean, I don't understand the law and there, I don't know anything about it, I said, what does it want?
And the land lock, your question is, what does land lock mean?
Well, why, well, I'm not legal to divide the land or sell the land.
So I, I think that's maybe a question that's not under the, what we're trying to do with the A1, correct? Maybe we can, we can bring that up towards the end?
So you can divide your property as long as you follow the requirements per the code, right? So if you own two and a half acres and you say, "You know what, I wanna distribute them from my family and leave each family member half an acre." And you pass the guidelines of the city, then you're able to do it, you would pass it here through the city.
But that's when I run into a problem, they say, when it's a land, you're not be able to divide that.
Yeah, then that, then we go back to it not being under the requirements, but it doesn't mean we can talk to, 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 uh, I lost the word. To planning and zoning, it doesn't mean we can't talk to planning and zoning and see how is it that we can help you out, right? If you're landlocked, then yes, unfortunately, right, it, it, everything is growing. Now, if there's other avenues on how you can come into your property because of emergency services or how is it that we can go about it to help you out, there's variances for that. But it doesn't mean that.
Unfortunately, I live in a, in a street where there's no, not too much of a good, in to now, out of that land. I mean, there is, right now, there is in to now because I guess we are running illegal there, but you know what I'm saying? It's, I think if I tell you, I, I will put the answer against me because I don't, I don't know the law. So I just live there, thirty years I lived there and I just stay quiet and I think, I, so by that way better.
I think it's on a case-by-case scenario, I think we would have to look at your case, maybe bring it up.
Maybe during the week, you can come stop by here and talk to planning and zoning and then go from there.
And see how we can help you there.
And the reason I ask you for that, that question, why I cannot divide in two pieces my land for the future? I'm not gonna change anything, I, I wanna keep doing agriculture. But why can't I set it up already since I'm alive? Now my kids not gonna be able to understand what I'm doing from, for what reason?
I, I'm sure there's a way that, that, that you, we might, again, sit down and talk about it, right, with planning and zoning because if it's like, from what I'm understanding, you, you wanna split, split it into two or whatnot. As long as you leave accessibility unit to both those lots and then go from there, right?
An easement per se, even if you have to create an easement, talk to engineers, whatnot. Now, we all have to understand that the city is growing faster than we can keep up with it. Everything is getting modernized, same thing for the amendment, before Conex containers were not allowed. When we had the meeting, now you can actually create a tiny, if I'm not mistaken, right? Now you can actually create a tiny home off of a Conex container, right? Because that is a new norm. So maybe back in the day when you applied, there was no outcome to it. Maybe if we revisit your file, maybe there's help out there, we just have to bring it up and go on a case-by-case scenario. But that is the reason why we're here.
Now, talking about the well water, I'm, I'm agriculture, I use the water to grow stuff, to grow plants, to grow trees, to grow fruit trees. I mean, that's illegal because it's well water.
Is that illegal?
Legal or illegal?
Oh, that, I, I wouldn't know what to tell you, but if you've owned your water well for years, I mean, and it's been there, your grandfather did, you have that water well.
Yeah, because I, I heard that guy out the well, he said that water contains alkaline.
Alkaline, huh?
I mean, I used that water for thirty years myself.
Yeah, there's a lot of people out there watering from water wells. I've never heard that it's illegal to use it, but no. Yeah. There's a lot of people out there watering from water wells. I've never heard that it's illegal to, to use it, but no.
So the, that's the, the problem I have, and the other bigger problem, like I said, I've got a lot of issues, but I don't wanna mention it now, like, I don't know if I get a good answer.
I, I would recommend that you come, come during the week to planning and zoning and start from there.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
Okay, so we will pu- close public hearing at six fifty-nine.
Item nine, considering take action on the approval of the proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinance of the City of Socorro, Texas, Chapter forty-six, zoning Article four, district regulations to add the district regulations for the A1 agricultural zoning district. Ms. Camino?
Thank you. Item nine is an ordinance amendment for, to Chapter forty-six, the City of Socorro's zoning chapter, Article four, district regulations. This is to add the regulations for A1 agricultural zoning district. And just in summary, this is an ordinance amendment to reestablish district regulations, again, for A1 agricultural. An outcome of the twenty forty Socorro Comprehensive Plan was in interest in preserving historic and agricultural lands as they're tied very closely to the history and strengths of Socorro. While the city is in the process of undertaking a comprehensive rewrite of our development codes, it is important to take on ordinance changes as they, as they emerge. One of the principal reasons for making this amendment change was to take advantage of the opportunity presented by this grant that, and program, and project that Ms., Mr. Loya, Ms. Loya, were bringing with the Harmony Desalting, um, um, folks. So in, uh, in our humble opinions, planning and zoning staff recommends approval of the amendment to Chapter forty-six, Article four, district regulations. As a follow-up as well, we also would like to add that the steering committee that you all recommended that we form after our July meeting, which was made up of two representatives from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Ressa, Mr. Estrada, along with three residents who are farmers in the community, Mr. Carrasco, Mr., um, Mr. Perez, and Mr. Sierra, met, I believe it was about three or four ti- three times, discussed the issues, raised questions, and actually also met with Ms., with the folks from Harmony, Harmony Desalting, to go, to ask questions and get a, a better understanding of what the ordinance was for and what the purpose was behind it. And their recommendations are also a, a product of this ordinance. But I do wanna say that I did not catch one of the changes that we discussed at that meeting, and I'll get to it, when we come to it in that, in that segment of the ordinance. One of the things that was requested as a part of the committee meetings was a better understanding of what had happened. And we, Mr. Boteo prepared this presentation, and he included it in the presentation. These are, uh, these are changes that are helping us to reach one of the, two of the goals behind our growth and development goals from the Comprehensive Plan. Goal three, new development supports the historic assets and rural agricultural character of Socorro. Uh, goal four, convention, conservation subdivisions protect to open space and agricultural, uh, uh, character of Socorro. A lot of land is being lost to development, because farmers are having difficulty keeping up with the cost of agricultural, um, uh, products, and finding labor and finding useful, uh, sorry, steady and reliable sources of water. Public notices were sent out, again, as a part of this, uh, these new amendments and changes to the A1 agricultural zoning ordinance, to all property owners who, uh, who, uh, were owned A1 zoned property. These were sent out in English and Spanish. No new, uh, no new comments were received either in support or against the zoning amendment changes. We did include the original one ordinance, uh, one letter that we received, uh, opposing the A1 ordinance, even though we didn't receive it again. And we did receive several questions from the public regarding the letter and the amendments. One particular item of interest, if you would like to add that, is a recommendation that we include agri tourism as a permitted use in the A1 agricultural district. Uh, the timeline was something that was recommend, requested from the committee, and it, it takes us back to the beginning of the city's incorporation, reincorporation in April of, of nineteen eighty-six, and the city's first zoning amendment, zoning ordinance, which was ordinance seventy-six, creating the various districts that make up the City of Socorro. That was in May of nineteen eighty-nine. A major amendment was made in November of twenty-two thousand two, minor amendment in two thousand eight. After that, there were only minor amendments, and they were mainly to the supplemental district guidelines for all districts. The ones that did include A1 were regard, were in regards to the keeping of large animals, parking spaces. But in twenty fourteen, the city inadvertently left off the agricultural zoning design, regulations from the ordinance, and we are proposing to place it back in as item number four under the section for district regulations. And to address some of the concerns that were raised as a part of the public hearings and community meetings, which I neglected to, to mention earlier, there were a lot of questions from the public, there was a lot of uneasiness, and we did ha- hold a separate community meeting that was very well attended here at council chambers, and stressing just some of the concerns from, uh, uh, some, answering some of those concerns, stressing that this is not an attempt from the city to rezone any property. Uh, this is not an attempt from the city to remove the A1 agricultural district regulations. The A1 continues to exist in our zoning map. Uh, property owners that are zoned A1 will not be affected. The ordinance amendment to add district regulations for A1 will apply to future rezoning applications for A1. Uh, the, uh, existing A1 ordinance, which was adopted in November seventeenth of two thousand eight, would apply to existing, uh, A1 zoned property. This is a little, a couple, few slides are difficult to see, but this was the ordinance that was in place before. And then the ordinance that we are proposing now. Uh, just some of the changes that recom, were recommended by the committee were the, uh, reduction of the lot sizes from two acres to one acre. And that is on page four of six of the regulation, of the, uh, district regulations. And then that we remove the distance requirements for the conditional use permit for the desalinization. Because the A1 districts are so scattered across the city, it would be very difficult for any one segment to adhere to the di- distance regulations. But we did want to say that through the conditional use permit, we could place a condition that a conditional use permit would be, uh, could be revoked with, um, with consideration, again, by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, if the residents felt unhappy or came across any disturbance by this, uh, this use in the zoning district. Uh, with that, this, in summary, the request is for approval of a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Socorro, uh, Chapter forty-six, zoning Article four, district regulations, to add the district regulations for the A1 agricultural zoning district. And with that, staff can answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
So right now, we're at a parcel requirement of a minimum of a two acre.
One acre.
One.
Oh, sorry, currently, yes, two.
It's two. And so voting on this would leave it at two, correct?
Would move it at one, to move it to one. That was a recommendation from the committee.
So we're recommending to move it to one acre, and we'd be voting on that, right?
Mm-hmm. Staff recommendation was to keep it at two?
Okay. And then, uh, can you, and I'm sorry, I was listening to what you were saying, but can you repeat again the, the item on, like, the paragraph six on the, on the conditional uses that's regarding the desalination plan?
So on page six, item six, under section four sixty-two, force forty-six, two ninety-two, conditional uses requires permit, is a section that was added for the desalina, desalination, containers, uh, and associated evaporation, evaporation ponds. It says that no pond shall be located closer than five hundred feet from a public water supply. Evaporation ponds shall not be located closer to a hundred feet from a private water well. Evaporation ponds must be located more than a hundred and fifty, uh, feet from the nearest property line, and more than a quarter mile from the nearest of any occupied residence or business structure, school, permanent structure containing a place of worship or public park unless, and then these are the, uh, A and I and two I, and two I, were the provisions to allow them for the ability to do that. Uh, that was placed after, I believe, the second meeting that you all had. And after the third meeting, after meeting, uh, and discussing, uh, where this would then be applicable, uh, we just, the committee decided to, uh, forego that and go with the option of any, it being placed any, in a agricultural zoning district through the conditional use, uh, conditional use permit process, additionally with another condition that it is conditional. Should the residents have concerns with any aspect of the project, either pollution, noise, smell, that they can raise that issue to this, to this Planning and Zoning Commission, we would then place it on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda again for consideration to take away the conditional use permit or keep it, give that recommendation, recommendation to City Council to, again, either consider revoking it or keeping it.
When, when the conditional use permit is granted, how, how long is that permit good for?
The current ordinance does not state that. Conditional use permits currently-
They don't expire?
They, 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 they don't expire unless the, the person who has the conditional use permit ceases to have that proper, uh, that use on that property, or if that property changes use.
Okay, and so wording, I want to see wording on here on how to allow the, the neighbors to come in and, and have it revoked. Is there a way to put wording like that into the ordinance itself?
I would defer to legal, if that nee- needs to be in the conditional use for this item, or if it would just be on a case-by-case basis when we hear zoning changes that would require this, or it's only to, to this item. Item six, desalinization containers. Because if it needs to be here, we can add it.
I'm, I'm gonna double check real quick under the, uh, conditional permit section, just give me a couple minutes here to check.
While he reviews that, are there any other questions?
Okay, so voting on this item, let's, however it goes, right? Uh, then it takes us to the, to the following item, which is ten. And now we're, now we're voting on whether to give that for rezoning, and then we're, we're gonna be voting on whether to rezone that to A1,
With the conditional use permit?
And whether or not we're gonna give a conditional use permit-
That is correct.
On it for the desalination.
And both of these are recommendations that we will take to City Council, and it will be heard at their next City Council meeting, which would be October sixteen?
So help me God, so when we add, or you add this item, for this particular, uh, uh, unit, does the applicant qualify with these new regulations?
Yes.
So five hundred feet from-
No, those, no, not the distance, which is what we had discussed, and why. Not, that, and it doesn't just impact this property, it impacts future properties should this pilot project be a success. So if this pilot project is a success, we don't want to limit small farms, because that is one of the advantages of this technology. We're, we're El Paso County, we're not, um, we're not strangers to desalinization. For the longest time, we had the largest desalinization plant in, uh, inland desalinization plant in the world. This take, that technology to the, to a small scale and allows everyday farmers, small acre, two acre farmers to be able to use this technology and, and assist, uh, expand their farming capabilities. But limiting it to a certain distance from another residence, just because of how much development has happened already in the City of Socorro, we kind of would be really limiting it to where. There's no more out there far away anymore. Socorro is a mix of agricultural, single-family suburban residential, commercial, large-scale commercial, large-scale industrial developments.
And if I can jump back in here, so the, there was a question on, you know, I guess, what can be done if there's an issue with a conditional use permit? So, um, section forty-six fifty-one says that, um, conditional use permits shall be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, whose recommendation will be submitted to City Council for final action. So that's all it says. But, you know, it's a conditional use permit, and any permit is subject to being reviewed. I mean, if it's not in compliance, a permit, you know, can be taken away if you're not in compliance with it. It's kind of broad, the way it's written, but I mean, it can be either brought back to planning zoning if there's an issue with permit not being used. I think you can also be cited as well, uh, you know, for, for violating the ordinance as well. And so there's, you can also go through municipal court as well. But I think, yeah, the both of those options are there, so if a, any kind of conditional use permit's not being used correctly, you know, it's subject to being recalled back by the city, so.
Any other questions? I think, um, we've pretty much heard, need to hear on this. Anybody else needs any other questions or whatnot?
This is only to approve the amendment for the-
A1.
A1. As it's not as, well, as it's written right now-
With the changes recommended for staff.
I just remembered, and I know you addressed this during the committee meetings, but you had proposed two acre parcels, and then we decided on a one acre parcel, can, but can you remind us why you were proposing or asking?
So one of the reasons we wanted to, uh, stress, one thing we wanted to stress in the A1 ordinance was preservation of the agricultural land. So the smaller you make the landlots, uh, the less, the more homes you're going to get on a single property, the more accessory units you're going to get on a, on a single property. That was the rationale behind supporting, um, two, and feeling that two were, was reasonable for A1 agricultural, uh, zoning designation. That was staff's reasoning.
And changing it to the one was, was more for the public, right, David? Or is that coming in from you?
Well, we discussed it, because there's, there's a, a lot of smaller parcels out there that are one acres that have water rights that could use A1 zoning, right, correct? Like, for example, horse property, one acre parcel with horses, um, right? That was kind of the reason?
Yeah, and to support smaller farms.
And to support smaller farms, which, I'll comment then, I'll, I'll make the comment on the desalination. Like, my original thought is, five, like, it should be like a minimum five acre parcel. But let's, let's say that this would pass with a five acre parcel that does away with all the smaller parcels and all the smaller people that could potentially take advantage of a desalination. could potentially take advantage of a desalination if it's successful.
Question, oh, go ahead, go ahead. So if if we're gonna vote on the amendment of the additions to the regulations, right, that doesn't mean that we can, when we get an item brought up, let's say for another desalination plan or for this one, that we can make an approval with recommendations for say how to protect the public, right? Per item, because it's not like they can go and put a desalination plan because they're going through here without the permit, so at the moment that they come and pull the permit, it'll come through us again and that's when we can put the clauses per every specific section, yeah, right?
They're conditional, it, it would require a hearing like this with a conditional use permit. Even if it was already A1. If it was already A1, it would require a conditional use permit hearing before the planning and zoning commission and then city council. And they would be taken on a case by case basis.
And you guys always have the, uh, the planning zoning commission has the authority to, on any conditional use permit, to add reasonable restrictions. The ordinance is allowed that. So yes, every time it comes back, as Miss Canio said, um, you can impose reasonable conditions. And then again, to kind of clarify where we're at right now, since we're on item nine, that it's to prove or, or, or not approve the A1 regulations. And I think regardless of, because there's that separate item right now pending on that, that, well, uh, or, or that desalination issue. Regardless of that, you still need some rules on desalination going forward in the future. So even without that item is, otherwise, there's no rules on it. So we need something in there since the city knows it's coming, which is why it's being addressed. But, but even then, with these rules, it still has to come in front of planning zoning. If there's an issue, you have the chance to approve or disapprove of conditional use permit, so that's, that helps then.
Yeah. And again, to grab, why not an acre or two acres? Can you explain it again? Because I know you had said a one acre, but we're, we're recommending two acres.
We're recommending one. You, the commission?
Correct.
The, I, I take that back.
Yes, 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 no, yeah.
Planning and zoning staff recommended two acres. That was what was in the previous A1 agricultural zoning district regulations. After meeting with the committee, understanding that the committee wanted to support smaller, uh, farming opportunities for smaller farmers, uh, the committee recommended one acre. I would say that two, as staff would say that two was a compromise, because five would be more to preserve more open space. The smaller the lot, the more, uh, construction, the more, uh, will, the more, um, yeah, construction will happen on the property, so you'll lose more of the open space. That was the only consideration that staff was presenting at the time that the committees met. But the ordinance currently states one acre.
No, it currently states two.
But?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the one in the backup that it says one.
Yeah, the one we have, on our, it says two acres.
Oh, which one are you looking at? In blue?
Section forty-six, yeah, in blue, section forty-six, two ninety-one. We have parcel requirements to be a minimum of two acres in size. That's why.
I'm looking, I'm looking at, uh, section forty-six, two ninety-three.
So in the purpose, it says to a minimum of one acre per dwelling unit, so we'll correct that there to, at forty-six, two ninety, on purpose. But on page, uh, six, under section forty-six, two ninety-three, area requirements, we did change it to minimum lot area, one acre.
Yeah, that, it's on page four of, of six.
Four of six, sorry. Section forty-six, two ninety-three.
Correct.
And, and then can you clarify the other section? What was that?
On, on, just to make sure we're getting it everywhere.
Yeah.
Forty-six, two ninety, under purpose, at the very end of the, the statement, it says to a maximum of one dwelling unit per two acres and it should be one acre.
Got it, okay.
Where else are you reading two acres? That, was that it?
No, we also have a minimum requirement of two acres on section, um, give me one second, I headed and I lost it again.
Is it two ninety-one D or, or C? Where it says under the temporary housing for workers, minimum of two acres in size.
I lost it, I lost it. Okay, so yeah, under permitted uses, forty-six, forty-six, two ninety-one, it says parcel requirements must be a minimum of two acres in size.
Yeah, that should also be read one.
One acre, and then which one did you say, sir?
That one.
That was the one.
That was the one, okay, yeah, that one there.
You said, you said page six of six also?
I said, I'm four of six.
It's, it was four of six.
I misread it, it was four of six. Section forty-six, two ninety-three, item one.
That one has minimum lot area of one acre, yeah.
Okay, that was.
Okay, there you go.
So, so we were to vote right now, we, we just need to, uh,
With these amendments.
With, with the amendment of changing to one acre.
And removing the, uh, location limitations.
Removing location what, I'm sorry?
Limitations for six C. Six, uh, item six, under conditional uses requires permit, item six, desalinization containers.
Yeah, I didn't catch that part.
Can we summarize that to just, uh, a section?
Sure. Section forty-six, two ninety-two.
Section forty-six, two ninety-two.
Number six, on page four. They already, uh, are having to, uh, meet all of their requirements, TCEQ permit and the guidance there for, um, assuring the health and safety of the water disposal, the brine, uh, capturing and contamination.
I will, I would like to make a motion to open up public hearing to only speak nothing to do with the desalination plan or anything, only on anything in regards to the amendment for whatever we add, because you were part of the committee, Mr. Perez. If you would like to come up and speak, please, or I would like to make the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Do we have to close, do we have to close the other one first though?
No.
No, okay.
No, so let me go ahead and just read the motion. So I have a motion made by Oswaldo Reza and second by Jul- Julie Dominguez to reopen public hearing only to speak about item nine. Yes. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstain? Motion carried. Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
The only concern I have is it's conditional. It was a lot of work just to get that petition that you have in front of you. And if I'm gonna have to be going back to residents and having to get everybody to come back into the office and sign and all this, it takes a lot of work to get the community involved.
For what are we talking about?
We're talking about the amendment.
No, no, but the amendment is how the ordinance or the regulation is gonna get established now. Like, everybody in Socorro is gonna have to go off of this. So, uh, the, the conditional, when you mean conditional, what do you mean by that? The permit?
Yeah, in other words, it's, it's gonna be allowed to, to take place, right, but then.
What's gonna be allowed to take place?
Oh, the.
Yes. Okay, so, but that's fine, but everything's gonna have to come in through here, but let's say it's not your neighbor, it's another community. If they're opposed to it, then they have to come in.
But you have to be getting the community involved and it takes a lot of effort and a lot of work to be doing that. So it takes a lot of time. I mean, the, the list that you have there has been a couple of weeks.
Okay, so.
But we have to have something to stand.
We have to, exactly. Not only that, but we, it, what if it was not on the desalination? Somebody else comes and says, well, I don't want horses in, in an acre.
It's because this, this type of activity needs to take place where there is no residence and there is no mission. There's several properties such as the one right in front of the dusty tap that is isolated, there's nobody there, there's no residence in the back. That type of farm, there's, they say that there's no farming land in Socorro that doesn't have residential. There is a lot of farming land without residential.
But this is what we agreed on when we did the committee meetings. To stipulate for the city, this is what the city was gonna go off of.
The only thing I'm against is that conditional part.
Yeah, but that'll be another item that then will open up for public hearing again and then hear out the whole community.
I just wanted to voice make.
Perfect. No, 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 and that's understood, but this is what's gonna go for the whole city of Socorro. And unless we forgot something from the committee meeting, right now is the time to bring it up on this, that what we didn't agree already.
Well, that's my main concern, is having to go back and do all this rework.
Got it. Thank you.
David, do we have to close? So, oh, go ahead.
I know you're talking about this amendment part, but when she was reviewing that, she went over one section on there with reference to, and of course it's going back to desalinization, but she covered it at this point with reference to a hundred feet, the desalinization with, uh, a hundred feet of a well. I thought I heard her say something like that.
It's a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty feet, I'm close to that, my well is close to that desalinization.
The evaporation pond shall not be located closer than a hundred and fifty feet from the private water well. So.
And we are recommending removing that.
And this?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't, we didn't bring anything up of that.
Yes, we, we did when we discussed residential and if you located your residence when removing the distance location, distance requirements, uh, and because each case could be dealt with on a case by case basis with the conditional use permit.
Okay, so then that'll be covered on the tenth item, the, the variance per se?
No, it would be here because it would apply to all of them. Now, here in the next case, we would take that case on a case by case basis, consider the distance to the residents around it, the location of the well, and making that determination there for that case.
But it hasn't been removed from the district regulations yet?
No, it's being considered now.
Okay.
That was a recommendation from the committee, it would just not move prior to the, in the ordinance.
I don't, I don't recall discussing that.
I don't do recall, I, now, if we accept it, we were to accept it the way it's written here, the way it's written here.
Yes.
First and foremost. If not, then maybe we can ask for that variance when we bring up the subject on the next item.
Yes.
But at the moment that we are going over this, then I don't even recall bringing that up right now, that removing a hundred and fifty feet from a private well or the parameters of that pond while we're trying to approve this, because if we remove it, then we have to remove it for everybody.
Yes.
Right? Uh, but then we would have to redo all this because, okay, why just remove that, but then not this, and why is this, yes, and why not that, uh? So, yeah. What else, man?
That was just a reminder.
Okay, your well is close, sure, than a hundred and fifty feet?
Yes, it's pretty close. I have to go back there myself, but I'm very close.
Okay, you are one hundred and fifty feet from the ponding area where your well is, from that property. Okay.
And so, okay, so I don't, I don't remember discussing that, six B? I don't remember discussing that in committee, but you're recommending or you're asking it for it to be removed at this point?
Yes.
And to vote on it. Why, why is that?
We, I, I will try again to remind you of the discussion as we were talking about, again, the location of the, um, different properties that might want to take advantage of a de- small-scale desalinization project, that they might not be able to meet this requirement for distance. So we didn't, um, we took, we, we voted on, on that item and because we felt that the, but because you all felt that the conditional use permit was enough to address each on a case by case basis.
Okay, and so you're saying if we remove it, there won't be any minimum requirement? There would be, there would not?
Yeah, there would not be any, any distance requirement.
From a?
From a, another residential property, from a private pond, from a public pond. Unless you wanted to keep any of those and keep I and I and two I, which would give the applicant options if they should not comply with the dis- distance requirement.
Are you, are you talking about removing six, six A, B, and C or just six B?
Six A, B, and C.
Removing that?
Yes.
No, I didn't agree with that at all.
Not in agreement at all. Ma'am, is your property closer than a quarter mile
Yes.
to that pond?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, and then under C, well, then that removes I and, uh, one and two.
One and two.
One and two.
Yeah, that removes, that removes the whole, the whole deal. Okay, so, I'm familiar with, with wells. I don't, I don't farm, but I have access to water wells and so right off the bat, having a brine pond with no minimum, right, I'm, I'm, if I'm a neighbor, for example, I'm jumping up and down and saying, well, wait a minute, I don't know the repercussions of having a brine pond next to my water well, right? What, what is that gonna do? It's no different than having, uh, an outhouse. You know, what did outhouses do to our water wells over the years, right? It's the same thing with the brine pond. We don't, we don't, we don't know what the repercussions are gonna be over the years. Um, and so there needs to be s- the, the the minimum requirements and what is in here right now, I, I was thinking that that's what we were voting for. I didn't think that we were voting to remove them. When I make the reference to the outhouse, Socorro traditionally had a, a lot of outhouses, right? And so that contaminated our water for a lot of years, a lot of years. Uh, so we've done away with outhouses, but it's, it's the same, same idea. We don't know, this is long-term, we don't know what's gonna happen. Uh, and we understand that, you know, there's plastic and inspections and the whole thing, but as a private landowner with a water well, I don't want a brine pond anywhere near my well. At all. But I understand that there needs to be some requirements, right, and I recommend that. Well.
Now, I, being from the committee, right, I don't remember this gonna be removed and if it was, we should have removed it before, right, and made the adjustments. Not only that, but at the moment where we were to approve this, then make those variances for the next item and then vote on it, right? Because I also thought we were voting for this to get adopted and then go after that.
Thank you. Okay.
So can we vote on it and make that, uh?
No, the only amendment that you need to make is to the, make sure that the A, uh, one acre changes are across the ordinance.
So that would be the only one?
The only change.
And I think we also, you said public hearing's still open, so we need to close public hearing.
We will close public hearing at seven thirty-six.
Thank you.
And then maybe to kind of help you guys on this, if you're entertaining a motion to approve, there was those, I think the two changes on the two acres to one acres.
That would only have a change.
Okay, so, on six C, on six C, the last word on there says unless. And then it goes on to Roman numeral one and two, right? And so does that word unless just pertain to item C and then one and two go into effect? Or does unless cover all of item six? Because once the affected landowner goes to one and two, then A, B, and C are, are, don't, can't be put into effect, right?
Yeah, the, the way I'm reading it, so, you know, A stands, A stands independently. You gotta do A, you gotta do B, and then you got C and then the unless just applies to then Roman numerals one and two underneath. But not to items A and B, if that makes sense.
Okay. It does. So evaporation ponds must be located more than a hundred and fifty feet on item C. From occupied residence or business structure, school, permanent structure containing a place of worship or public park unless. So a hundred and fifty feet. I have a, just a question. If the, if, if, if item six was not in the ordinance, right, if it wasn't in the ordinance, we would, we would have voted A1 into existence already. Right? Is there any, and, and, it's not that I wanna do this, but I wanna move forward, right? Is there any way to put item six aside? And continue to debate it and then just vote for A1 and, I mean, amend it later?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's your call as a commission is that you can, you know, you can move to approve however you want with whatever change that you want to the ordinance. with whatever change that you want to the ordinance.
Okay, well, I.
It, it will still also, I mean, they'll still go to city council as well, and so they may have changes up and down, back and forth as well, so.
I personally believe that there has to be some type of regulations, no matter what. And so, if, if I am a resident in this community and I'm a hundred and fifty feet away from, uh, um, a pond that is going to be built, and only because my background is in refining, and I know about brine, and I know about ponds, and I know how they smell, and I know what problems they can create, there has to be some type of regulation in order for us to control. I totally agree with Mr. Ressa that, yes, grant money, we, we should not turn it down, and we shouldn't turn this one down. But I think that that is why I was asking all these questions, was because I think it's important that when we purchase our properties, okay, and we purchase a residential lot, okay, and all of a sudden we come in and rezone it, and we have a lot of opposition for it, then I think that we need to listen to the community as much as we are listening to the applicant, okay? But I think that there has to be a law, a, a, a law, a line that is drawn to, um, protect. Because like you said, you would not want a pond right next to you in your property, especially if you're less than a hundred and fifty feet close. If you're the neighbor, if you're in front, and there is a church, and there is across the street. I mean, I think it's important that these regulations here are important, no matter what. You know, you have to stipulate something, you have to, it has to be written in there. If we're gonna do a, um, uh, desalination unit, not just here, but somewhere else, there has to be, there has to be a regulation to control it. And so, and there has to be, uh, the proper testing, the, the evaluation of these, these items. So I think that this, to me, is important for each state, is what I'm trying to say, you know?
This is where I stand, right, in the verbiage where you said unless and also, right? I mean, because I wanna move forward with it as well, rather than removing it, would be keeping it. And I'm not making a motion, right, that would just be where I'm at. And when it, the terminology is unless, then you have to include Roman number one and Roman number two. So instead of it being either or, for it to be Roman number one and Roman number two. You need that engineer report, and you need the written consent of the neighbors that they agree to it.
Instead of or.
Instead of or.
Yes.
And at that point, I think these setbacks are good to move forward with it, of course respecting the neighbors that. If she's within a hundred and fifty feet, well, if she's within a quarter mile of her residence, that'd be that.
Wait, wait a minute, so, so that part right there, like the, the hundred and fifty feet from a, from a private water well, and then someone comes in for a, um, conditional use permit? Like an item like that, the hundred and fifty, let's say they're a hundred and twenty feet. Could there be like a conditional variance, a variance on the conditional use?
Yeah, I mean, they'll, yeah, they'll be asking for a variance from the, from the permit.
So that's where you say we take them case by case, or?
Mm-hmm. And then they, they can, they can get written consent from the neighbor and say, no, no, yeah, I'm okay with them doing that here, I have my well.
There's that option.
And I'm fully aware, here's my name, my input, accept it, right? That would be something where it protects the residents, and you're getting it in writing from them that they're for it or against it.
Right.
Anyone can comment, please?
Um, I, I, so I think you're gonna be in the next, in the item, so you could talk.
We're, we're gonna go to item eleven from here, correct?
Right.
We already did item nine, so we're going to eleven.
Yeah, I think we vote on this one and then we go to that.
So I'd like the idea of doing and?
Yes, instead of or.
Okay. Ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the condition for the amendment of changing the requirement to be from two acres to one acre. Additional condition of number six C in section forty-six dash two ninety-two, for all that section to stay. And the verbiage of letter C to change from or to and, that both Roman number one and two are required.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Do you think anyone can make a comment?
When we bring up the.
You are the head of the public, you're the leader. I took this amendment to change from two acre to one acre.
Can you open it? Okay, so we're gonna make a motion.
Yeah, but then I make the motion. Okay, so do we backtrack the motion or you guys?
You wanna recognize the speaker, or you're saying you're gonna wanna make him, or you wanna redo the motion?
Yeah, no, we wanna open the, we wanna hold off on the motion and then open up just to get his.
Okay. So the chairperson, yeah, can recognize the speaker and call him up and?
Okay, so I recognize, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your, your name, sir, you can go ahead and come up and state your name. Right, so we can recognize you and, and, and hear you out, and then we will either change the verbiage or stay.
Quantum Way again, founder of Harmony Desulting. I just wanna provide some context for, uh, this language that appears in section six. This language mirrors pretty closely what appears in the TCUQ regulations. So, and I think the TCUQ regulations are well-formed. Parts A and B are mandating specific distances from public and private wells. This last section, section C, uh, I, I'll just say if you change, uh, that last word or to an and, uh, that would pretty much make this, uh, project, uh, on the proposed site impossible. Uh, we looked into, I mean, we looked into the evaporation pond very clearly, it's within a quarter mile of neighboring property. Uh, we requested from the city of Socorro for all neighboring properties within the quarter mile. Uh, quickly numbered into over three hundred. Uh, clause C one requires unanimous consent from all of those property owners. Uh, you know, I think the state includes that or because they recognize in some cases that first clause is onerous. The second clause, uh, allows for the odor control plan. Uh, if you were independent of this project, any desalination project, if you were to require both sections one and two, uh, you would be increasing the burden of the desalination projects. Uh, the state, uh, has specified one or the other. I think, uh, they're basically, their reasoning is either you're in close proximity to neighboring residents, uh, or not. Um, but that's just their perspective, uh, from ourselves as a project.
You're saying if it's good enough for TCUQ, it should be good enough here?
Me, out of, uh, I mean, even if you were to, even if you were to allow more, the C is going to require all of this.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, let me ask you to clarify.
Yes.
You're talking about C, Roman number one and two, right?
No, all of section six, A, B, A, B, and C is all in the TCUQ general program.
Uh-huh, and you're saying to change or, to leave it as or rather than and?
I would, I would either, I would leave this language unmodified because any, any project that comes in with an evaporation pond is going to have to comply with this language.
Correct, but at the moment that we get an engineer report?
Yeah.
Then we're ruling out the neighbors, and I don't agree with that. Because then if they're doing something where the neighbor is more than a quarter mile away, then they don't have to worry about the neighbors. At this moment, you're only having to worry about this if you don't meet the minimum requirement of a quarter mile further away from a residential dwelling, unless you get the engineer report and written consent from the neighbors. That's because you're too close for it. But if you're doing this on a five-acre parcel, then you don't have to worry about it. The neighbor is too far away from where you're gonna be doing it, so I'd rather keep the or, and I totally get where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But I'm more concerned about the residents because of how close they're gonna be. So that engineer report clarifying it, and the neighbors giving them that peace of mind that they have that report, and they have written consent to move forward with it, would leave me a little bit more comfortable.
That's fair enough, that, that's fair enough, um.
Cause that would only be unless they don't meet C.
Right, so this will, yeah, but this, I guess, um, I'll say this would basically kill any prospect of the small-scale desalination, which is exactly what we're trying to, what we're working towards. Thank you.
I don't see how. Huh?
I don't see how.
Well, because if the neighbors aren't to it, they're not gonna give written consent, but then you're not gonna have it within a quarter of a mile from the house. We have to close, public hearing.
Yep, we have to close, I don't know, if I didn't open it, just.
We're waiting for the second on his motion.
So we would need to, um, say again the motion, and then we could vote. Say the motion, the motion again, and then we could vote.
Oh, okay.
So do you wanna keep the same?
But, okay, so, Mr. Quantum Way was saying that we should keep that language because of TCUQ, right? But then we were being asked to remove it by staff.
No, he's only talking about, if we're now gonna keep it, he wouldn't wanna change the verbiage on one and two from or to and. Because at that point, they can do either or, so since they would be on a smaller scale, then they just have to get the engineer report, and they're going through with guidelines, rather than having to get the engineer report and the written consent of the neighbors.
And so again, just, uh, to clarify, when you all met and discussed the concerns, there were things that, uh, Mr. Boteo, the planner, entered into here, and he took this language as it's, uh, exact as Mr. Way was saying from the permit, so he's already getting that permit and, and, uh, it's already being covered there. Uh, when we discussed, uh, taking it out, uh, the proximity and limiting the ability to use this technology for small farmers, that's when we took it out. I inadvertently didn't take it out because that's not how I was expecting to see it. I was looking for it somewhere else. So that was an error on my part. Uh, but just to clarify, that was the, the, the chain of events, um, that led us here. So my apologies for the confusion, um, but, uh, you are, again, at your discretion to eliminate those items under six, uh, or change that. But understanding as, uh, Mr. Wes said, you're really making it very difficult, well, uh, pretty much impossible for something like that, uh, this project to, to move forward. Again, covered with, uh, during our committee meetings as being this is conditional, you can take it on a case-by-case basis, and, um, this is a public hearing where the public can, uh, comment and address both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council with their concerns.
So if we leave it the way it is, we just, everything that comes in, we go case-by-case basis, I mean.
Yeah, but then we wouldn't have a way to deny it, or the residents wouldn't have a word to speak, you know, if they have everything through the guideline.
They do, the, the conditional use permit, it's a process. They have to come here, and it wouldn't even come here if it didn't meet the requirements.
Correct, but at that moment, if it, if it meets everything? If it meets everything, then we get it, we don't have a reason on why to deny it because they're following the guidelines.
You have, all, all the reasons to deny it, if the public comes to voice their concerns. You take it as a, on a case-by-case basis. Again, it's a public hearing, you have an opportunity to listen to each case as they come before you.
Can we go into executive, please, because I have some questions? I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, but I'm gonna add to something, I, 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 I need, I need like a three-minute break, I gotta go to the bathroom also, please.
Let me do the motion, and then we could take a break as well. So I have a motion to go into executive by Osvaldo Ressa, second by Andrew Arroyos, all those in favor to approve?
Aye.
I'm sorry, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstains? We're going into a break, and then to executive.
Session at eight oh nine. And we will continue with, uh, item number, what was it, eleven? Nine, i- item number nine. We had, believe we have a, a, a motion.
Quick, quick, quick question, sorry. You mentioned agri tourism?
Oh, that's right. That was, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Yes, we did get a resident who, uh, suggested rec- adding agri tourism as, uh, permitted use in A one.
So I'm thinking like the progress on, 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 uh,
The, pumpkin patch.
The, uh, yeah. That's agri tourism. So that, so that we need to say that in motion?
If you would like to include it or if it makes more sense in C two general commercial? It's already permitted under C two general commercial.
Okay. Already permitted.
Okay, I'll like, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the amendment of reducing the minimum lot area from two acres to one acre, keeping the verbiage as is and adding agri tourism to this regulation as permitted use.
I second.
I have a motion to approve with amendment to reduce acreage from two acres to one acre, keeping verbi- um, verbi- verbiage.
Minimum requirement of amendment from two acres to one acre?
Minimum.
For A one zoning.
Requirements. To approve with them, with amendments to reduce minimum land acreage requirement from two acres to one acre. Keeping, um, keeping the verbi- I'm sorry.
Verbiage.
Verbiage. Keeping verbiage and adding agri tourism to permitted uses.
Mm-hmm.
I have a second by Andrew Arroyos to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any nays? Any abstains? Motion carried. Moving to item number eleven. Considering take action on the approval of the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of track four dash B, block sixteen, Socorro Grant, located at two thirty-two South Nevades Road, Socorro, Texas, from R one single family residential to A one agricultural and a conditional use permit to allow for a small scale water dis- desalination project. Ms. Camilo?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and question number three. Uh, item number eleven is a desalination request, um, for the track four B, block sixteen, to program located at two thirty-two, uh, South Nevada Road, from R one single family residential to, uh, A one agricultural and a conditional use permit to allow for a small scale desalination project. Just wanted to represent the situation, sorry. The applicant is, the property owner is Ralph Loyah. The representative, Conton Way, in acreage of B. Property is two point three three acres in size and is meant for rezonant R one residential. The future land use designated this area as rural residential. And in summary, the request is to allow for the designated property from R one single family residential to A one agricultural with a conditional use permit to allow for a small scale desalination project. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval for both the rezoning and the conditional use permit. The property is located on South Nevada's, um, just halfway between Socorro Road and Alameda Avenue. It is zone R one, single family residential and has single family residential to the north, south, and west with, uh, M one and M two industrial, uh, zoning districts to, to the east. Assumed view of the area shows a greater view of the surrounding zoning districts. Our property is in the center on Miami Red. These are photographs, uh, taken from South Nevada's road. And an aerial view of the property. The current, um, existing, um, residential home and the, uh, basic, um, lands surrounding it, as well as some of the vacant lots, uh, surrounding the property and the industrial to the east. This is a picture of the future land use map designated as rural residential. Public notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet of the applicant property. We did receive the opposition, um, uh, petition that you will receive today with fifty-one signatures. We did not receive any letters in support of the request. These are letters, these letters that were sent out, both in English and Spanish, to the property owners within the two hundred feet of the resident property. And finally, they made through the site plan showing the locations of the container containing the, uh, desalination equipment and the location of the front comp to the rear of the property. Uh, in summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of the property from R one to A one with a conditional use permit to allow for a small scale water desalination project. And with that, staff can answer any questions. And again, representative, uh, for Mr. Loyah is here, uh, Ms. Marty Loyah, as well as, uh, Mr. Wes.
So, I have some questions for, for, for. Can you, how many, you mentioned earlier when you first presented that this was, uh, this is more vast technology or a moderated technology? So, can you give us an example? Like, what I'm thinking is, like, the old technology, like, how many, like, if you take out a hundred gallons of, of, of well water, how many gallons of good water can you get back from that?
Exactly.
The old technology compared that to this technology?
So with the conventional desalination technology, I mean, it really depends on the water type. But let's say you take a hundred gallons from a well. Conventional desalination, when you take that hundred gallons, produce fifty gallons, half of it as fresh water. And a half of it would be produced with brine. The benefit of our advanced technology is we can take that hundred gallons from the well and we can recover much more than ninety percent of it as fresh water. And a much smaller percent of it, ten gallons of brine. So this helps to, well, always in that.
And then, this is, uh, solar powered, you said?
It'll be, for the most part, solar powered. Uh, we're planning on plugging the air conditioner into the grid as well as the control, control box, the pumps and the others will be solar powered.
Okay, and are, are solar panels already installed on property or does that come with?
They are not currently on the property. All the solar panels will be mounted to the desalination container.
Um, you mentioned, and I, I didn't catch it, this, uh, this desalination climate, but, probably.
Uh, basically, I think. Uh, basically, I think, uh, basically, uh, introduction to de-solvenation and basic concepts. Uh, that's a section we plan to add to our website. I think it's something, you know, some of those topics we'll go over during this tomorrow's demonstration. So that's, uh, we plan to add that because understandably, people have questions about, you know, what is this going on this property or that's nearby and we'd like to explain that to people.
Okay, um. Very, what are the, you mean to do with this grant or federal funds, like, the property number?
So, uh, officially, Harmony De-Solvenation Corporation, that's our legal name. Uh, we applied for grants from Bureau of Reclamation, they're a federal agency. They are under the Department of Interior. They manage water at West and they have a de-solvenation research program. Uh, several years ago, they awarded, this is a recurring program. Uh, we applied for the grant, won the grant, as someone else mentioned, it's three hundred thousand dollars in federal funds for us to pilot our de-solvenation technology. Does that, I think that answers the question.
So the, the grant was awarded to Harmony?
Yes, perhaps.
And there, it said your discretion is decide where in the country to utilize this technology?
Exactly, it's our discretion how to use it. Uh, I mean, there are federal funds, we do need to apply. So basically, most of these projects, as people have mentioned, they do occur in test facilities. University labs, uh, there's a research facility in Alameda. As a startup, uh, we feel it's important to take the technology and really test it in a real world condition. Where the, one thing about many of these pilot projects is most of the water, the fresh water that's produced is never used. We feel very strongly, we've been at this for several years now, that we are at the point where the water should be going to productive use, growing wine grapes. Uh, so it is, yes, it's our prerogative to take the project, uh, where, where we think it's best within the country, so long as we comply with both the state and federal regulations. So this project is somewhat different, uh, in that it's, uh, not in a test facility. Uh, and that's, that's very much intentional.
So, okay, so to clarify, like, water that, that's being extracted at a test facility?
Yep.
You expect that to be, that happens, place?
Yeah, exactly, typically it goes into a tank, you'll measure it to make sure that it's clean. But most of the water that we produce from our company, these test facilities, I mean, will take ceremonial drinks. But that's thousands of, tens of thousands of gallons of water that's gone down the drain. And, you know, we've got all these federal funds that can go towards the project, uh, to benefit a resident of Socorro. So it's a proof point for future projects, uh, someone mentioned. Future grants, there is, uh, Texas Water Development Board has a lot of funding available, uh, for, uh, de-solvenation projects. So we see this as just the beginning, uh, but yeah, it is, it's more of a lift, obviously, you know, uh, we don't have to go through all this. And, you know, there are a number of reasons this project, even if city council approves this project, Texas historical commission, because we're so close to the mission, mandates that we have a licensed archaeologist look at the site of that. If they find anything significant, that will mean the project won't happen here. And that will probably, will pack up and will go to that test facility in Mexico. But we very much would like to try as much as we can, uh, to get, to bring these wine grapes, fish grapes.
Why not do the, the historical testing part rather than this then? Or is it small hole or what?
Um, the, the historical testing, uh, will eat up a lot of our budget. We have, we have to pay that license architect. So, uh, for me, I have, I think, a project budget, to me, it makes sense. Uh, so, yeah, sort of make sure that we have the local regulations in order before you move to spending money on, uh, getting into compliance with the state regulations. You already spent money, uh, on the design of the brine pond. Uh, but I have to, yeah, have to be responsible with this grant, these grant funds.
What's the total amount of grant then?
Three hundred thousand in federal funds, uh, with additional non-federal cost share provided by Harmony, uh, and the lawyers and other, there are.
So what's the total cost of the project?
The total cost of the project as proposed is four hundred twenty thousand. Uh, that budget probably won't be quite so much. Uh, preliminarily, I would say three hundred sixty thousand.
Okay, other than the grant and, okay, so there's additional money, maybe up to sixty thousand.
Yep.
Is there any other, is there any in hold or?
There's no loans in hold.
No, no, there's no, nothing in hold.
That was a, it's a grant, it's a reimbursement based approach. So as these funds can be of the federal account that we draw from, uh, or approved, that federal account approved for up to three hundred thousand.
Does, is the property owner, are they contributing the well or? The protocol's been three sixty to four twenty.
So, that'll re- yeah, so it'll be less than four twenty. That original project budget was when we're still at our original site in Lockhart, where we needed to dig a whole well and an average. So this project budget's smaller than the well already produced.
How deep is the current, what part, what part of the?
I've been told eighty feet, eighty feet.
Um, and then diameter?
Ten inch, ten inch? We're not, we're not sure about that, I think, well. I think, I would think six inch casing.
Yeah, but that's a case, you know?
It's there, the casing.
Maybe pumping out maybe four inches of water, which will give them about three hundred gallons a minute.
I, I guess, I'm a bit, is that, is it sufficient?
Yeah, no.
Is, is there, like, has it tested, is sufficient to draw out the, you know, water?
So, so the pond, so the pond, the pond, the area that everything goes well, we will still use drip irrigation, so it's not, like, flooding. We will continually use drip irrigation that now connected to the well.
Like, is there, is there drainage, do you, uh, I don't know, I'm asking about, thinking that drip drainage, you use a lot of that water from, from there.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than, is, is this stuff, is this stuff, is stuff?
I have a question, you told me earlier that the size of the pond was a, a, like, gallon or, like, a, in perspective, what is, like, square foot, per acre?
About thirty thou- no.
About thirty thousand square feet.
About thirty thousand square feet.
Cause you're at an acre, you're at forty-three, five sixty.
Forty-three, mm-hmm. Thirty thousand square feet.
It's bigger than half an acre of the pond, correct?
No, it's less than half an acre.
Oh, you're saying point eight acres. Point oh eight? Oh, you said point eight, okay.
Yeah.
So point zero eight is not even a, no, it's point ten, yeah, point ten, point eight zero eight is maybe the size of this room.
About four hundred square feet, five hundred square feet.
Uh-huh, huh? About the size of this room, yeah. You had said point eight, that's what it was, oh wow, okay.
That's, that's half our property.
Yeah, that's half the property, that's what we were thinking, that's why we said it's adjacent to all the neighbors.
That's a picture, uh, basically here, this is a little larger than the pond.
See that little green, the little green, no.
Point oh eight, yeah, not even one tenth of an acre, not even a tenth of an acre, just shy of.
Something like this.
You said it's on the back side, so there are neighbors on the back side. None of them is on the back.
What's on the back side of the cement?
With the El, El Paso Star, no, I think, no?
How close, we'll open up public hearing right now, but how close is the neighbor's property from the proposed pond to there and the well?
Well, the well's probably there.
No, no, the neighbor's well, the one we were talking, no. Because with, what you, we just approved for A1, we'll just have to ask now, maybe not be able to approve this item, but ask for variances at that point. Can you speak up louder to the microphone?
So we do, so we check the, the existing well, all around the, the existing well. Now that it's closer than, uh, coming along, how do we, so, all those beyond that, so, there's no registered well that we can find. So, and I believe we also check property, property on, uh, property, uh, line. I think we, we let this provision, uh, provision very far back.
Of the quarter mile, minimum?
I need to check that, that, I didn't read, I know, so that, yeah, we let the, where you want.
Okay. And when we're talking about wells, it has to be a registered well that you looked for, not a residential well, correct? For residential watering, okay. And hardly anybody has registered wells, that's, that's a downfall on it. Ms. Loyah, are yours wells registered by any chance? All of them? You only have two and they're both registered?
Yeah, one in this property and one at the other.
Okay. What else is I gonna ask? David?
I'd just like to add that, uh, in my line of work, I deal a lot with TCEQ and those guys are pretty, pretty strict. And you have to follow their guidelines or whatnot and, and their fines are very, very sturdy. Very, very high fines. So, again, I'm not voting on it right now or whatnot, but whenever I see TCEQ, it's already a hard thing on the applicant, on rules that they have to follow, and they, I mean, you can't break them, because if you do break them, that fine will shut you down completely. Um, that's another reason why I, I lean towards, right, I, I like, I like the idea. I do feel for all the residents, of course, you know, they, they've lived there for years and, and of course, there's, there's change. Um, and, um, something that they don't know, they don't, uh, know what's gonna happen in the future, if it's gonna affect their land or not. Again, I go back to the TCEQ regulations and, and the rules that have to be followed and, you know.
If I may, I'd like to open a public's hearing, I, I see you guys are still here, I'm assuming it's for this specific item. Let me just tell you where I stand, this is very important to me and I, and we're here to, to voice your guys' concerns, right? So, we're in the middle, I'm also speaking as a farmer, but I'm also here to voice residents' concerns. So this is very important, the more feedback you can give us, the better. Whoever wants to come up and speak, right, because we have to make a decision on this today. Um, knowing that we also just adopted the new amendment of the, the, the A1 and also keep in mind that this is still gonna have to go to city council, right? So it doesn't mean that if we deny it today, it might get a, it might, they might still approve it at city council. Or we might approve it and then they still might deny it at city council. So just be on that, but the more feedback you can give us, the better. So I'd like to open a public hearing.
A second.
Yes, we're, we're gonna open a public hearing, so let, let him, let us just open it and then we'll go.
I have a motion made by Osvaldo Ressa to open public hearing. Second by Andrew Arroyos. To approve, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried, Mr. Arroyos, may you please open public hearing?
Open public hearing at eight thirty-three.
The name was just for the record.
Tomorrow, uh, Harmony is gonna give a demonstration of the property down there. Everyone is welcome to sit there. So maybe verify some questions, answers, that type of it. So I think a lot of times what happens, and I think it happened on the previous, uh, item, you're buying with A1, you're staging A1. A lot of hearsay, a lot of misconceptions, a lot of bad information that gets people all upset and they're familiar with their perfect facts. And I think anyone that has questions should attend the.
Will you by any chance have staked out the diagram of where the pond will be? Will you have the diagram of where the conics will be? Where, a sort of layout so they get a better feel for it and maybe run the well to get an idea of how much noise it's gonna create?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly have that laid out. Um, in fact, I mean, I think it's a good thing we're here at this hearing. Uh, one thing, I mean, we've just discussed this, but potentially, we can move this evaporation pond upwards so that it's not directly on the neighbor to the south's property and next to this cement plant, uh, on the east side and then surrounded by, uh, the property owners. Uh, so maybe this is a concession we can make, uh, get that brine pond a little further away.
Get it the furthest away from everybody else.
Yeah, yep.
Maybe drying it out there tomorrow with the states of the pack, point zero eight, so that they don't see that it's as big as the one in the picture.
That it's smaller.
Okay, thank you for the info, Mr. Perez.
One of the questions came up as to how close that pond was to the residential area. And right under this is Marquez Street. And there's about five or six homes that go across right near there. The young woman that was here earlier, she's got a well.
Where, where is that, can we zoom out?
Zoom out?
Can we zoom out there, please?
That, I don't think you need to go to Google.
No, I'm sorry, if you don't mind speaking into the mic, please.
Do you have a Google map?
Well, here's Marquez. This is the property, applicant property and the residential that he is, uh,
Those five sections, yeah.
And the, the homes on Marquez, a home here on Marquez as well.
And the purple one's also a home.
The M1.
Yes.
Zone property.
That's a Sanchez.
Okay, so where's this in that?
The purple.
The, the dark purple.
Okay, so he's gonna move the pond further up toward the, uh, letting up to, um.
Which is another concern with all the chemicals that come out of that plant into the ground, you're gonna start pumping all that water up to use it for plants?
Well, just bring the pond, you could go out or somewhere else.
But the water, as it creeps down into the ground. Okay, that's a better picture there, thank you. So, the pond would be, it is already adjacent to the, to the cement plant, right? That's where the pond would go? So if we bring it up, it would only get closer, okay, so right there, per se, the middle, closer to their dwelling. Where does the neighbor that spoke up that has a well live at?
Right on Marquez.
She lives right there?
Yes.
That is not.
No, 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 that's the Rodriguez, go to the right.
That one?
Keep going. One of those two houses there.
Okay. So if they move that pond further up, then at that point, she might be within a quarter mile to the pond or not?
It's within a quarter mile, but more than a hundred fifty feet.
And closer to the cement plant, per se adjacent to the back park, right?
Yeah, and not, not neighboring, there's a residence on the lower right-hand side here, so getting away from their property.
Yeah, getting away from their property, more towards the top of the actual property of the residence, so right there.
I think to help to, to clarify is if you guys are considering a condition of moving the pond, is that, you know, or maybe talk to the applicant as well as how many feet do you want to, which direction, I sound like north, northeast or northwest?
And, and I think at this point, um, we would have to cover, I think, all the other effects, right? Cause making sure the well, the, the residence close by the quarter mile and all that from all the other.
Yeah, it'll still have to, well, you know, so technically, because you just approved that ordinance, that's what, what a city council might get, maybe come down, but that has to get approved. This is gonna get, if, if it's being considered for approval, will be kind of simultaneous. Uh, but yeah, it will have to follow that ordinance.
That ordinance that we just talked.
Which has all those conditions already laid out. With any other conditions you've got to have.
I just wanna make it clear that the well is.
I just wanna make it clear that the well is not doing any, will not do anything different than what it's doing right now. The well is bringing the water, take it, and then it goes to the desalate plant to clean it basically, and then it goes to the pond. So, the well's gonna work just like it works today, nothing different. Right?
Who else? Anybody else?
My name is Jose Castillo, and, uh, listening very patiently, nodding my head as you can see. Um, I listened to the gentleman, and I asked a couple of questions outside. Uh, I spoke to Mrs. here. This is the first time we're gonna try to do some kind of agricultural water, they've never done it before. A small company of two to ten people, whi- which I'm sure they're capable of doing it, but there's a lot of questions of how they're gonna do it. What's gonna happen to the property, for example, he said only fifty percent of the water is useful. Fifty other percent is what? Waste.
If, if he were to do it, it's gonna think it's ninety percent.
Hang on, hang on, that's what he told me, I'm just repeating something he just stated. That only fifty percent of the water is useful. What about the other fifty percent that's not useful? What do you do with that? And that's what I think the gentleman over here is trying to say, there's the waste and the smell. What is that, how do you take that away? What are you gonna do with it? And that's what he's never mentioned so far. I've heard that twice, now that's why I shake my head a lot. Because he said that, I'm just repeating. And I'm all for trying to, I even invest in solar panels. Bad idea. I don't believe in solar panels. I put in two different types of my houses, and they, they work, but they don't work effectively for power. Okay, I mean, that's just my opinion. Again, the question is, if you're only gonna use fifty percent of the water, and fifty percent is waste, what do you do with the waste? It's gonna build up somewhere. Um, and I'm, I'm not, and you can, you can respond to that, I'm just, I'm just listening to what he said. And I caught on to that, and I shake my head. The other thing is, you have a ponding water in a plastic containment, right? Have to have plastic to try not for the stuff to get out into the seepage area, which is the waste, correct? Which is called the brine. What happens, I know it's a small scale right now, but then you start doing these small scales everywhere, what's gonna happen? What if you were to do it at a larger scale? What's gonna happen? So, right now, based on just what he's telling me, we're only gonna produce fifty percent, which is good for the water, for what she needs to do, to do a grape, to do vines. Because he who drinks wines from the vine, if you're gonna drink, uh, bad chemicals when you're drinking wine, obviously you're gonna get sick. And obviously, she's trying to avoid that by using this, this system, which hasn't been proven to work in, effectively in agriculture yet. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say yet, because I'm not, not, I might not be around for it to ever happen, but the gentleman here is younger enough, and maybe it's gonna happen, not here, but maybe somewhere else. But think about that, that's just my thought. And he can address what I just finished, uh, talking about. And hopefully, you caught on to what he said. And I just made some, uh, interesting notes about production because of the, what he was saying, he needs solar, he thinks solar will help, I think solar may help, but not a lot. Very simple, there's not enough power that solar will do for you, unless you have the entire farm of solar panels. The question is how much solar panels he's gonna need to use to put on that farm to, to generate the power he's gonna use. And it's not bad, but again, fifty percent good water, fifty percent bad. What do you do with the bad? It's gotta go somewhere, can't stay there forever. It's gonna smell, it has to. You're talking about some kind of a chemical coming out of the ground that we probably all drinking at one time or the other. But, when you start con- uh, putting it all together, and it's accumulating, then what?
Let me ask you a question. Did you, did anybody else have a question?
No. I just wanted to make a clarification that, that I did, if I, if I remember correctly, the gentleman said that with this new...
No, 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 yeah, the question's for you, no, for you. All for me? And then he's gonna make his statement.
Oh, I'm just trying to make a clarification to, to where... Right, but I'm, I'm trying to make the clarification that the gentleman back there was asked a question on with this new technology, how much percentage of this water would be good? I believe you said it was ninety percent, correct? And ten percent would, would be? Would be the brine? Okay.
So, to clarify, the question was asked, we're piloting an advanced technology. What is the difference between our advanced technology and what exists today? Existing technology would recover fifty percent freshwater, meaning fifty percent goes to brine, meaning if the lawyers tried to do conventional desalination on their property, you'd be looking at a half acre pond, which would be too expensive, we wouldn't be considering it because it, it wouldn't make sense. So, it's because our advanced technology reduces the brine volume by five times. This is beginning to become an economically feasible proposition for small farmers, which is why we're even considering this in the first place.
So, to clarify, ninety percent of your new system on the pilot would be good water on average?
Correct.
Ninety percent? Only ten percent would be wastewater?
Correct.
And, and the wastewater, how often does it have to be cleaned out? Does it stay there forever? Does it evaporate? Do they clean it out? How does that work?
So, T C Q, the way this T C Q permit works, there's a sizing guide, and it looks at net evaporation rates within different quadrants of Texas. And basically, you rate your pond, there's a whole tool. So, we've sized our pond, we have an anticipated brine discharge rate. You plug this into a spreadsheet, you go month by month, and they look at, they have you look at the twenty-five year worst case. So, over the past twenty-five years, the wettest January, the wettest February, wettest March. It could be all from different years, but you're looking at the twenty-five year worst case, and you use that in order to size the pond to make sure that it's not going to overflow. There's always gonna be plenty of evaporation to take care of the brine that you are sending in, that your pond is rated for. The pond has a rated brine flow rate capacity. Uh, so, T C Q regulations essentially, I think they do, I mean, this makes the pond, I'd say, even larger than it, than we would like it to be, because that's making it more expensive for us. But I understand from the regulation point of view, they want absolutely no chance of overflow. So, there should be no liquid overflow. Occasionally, uh, let's say every five years, the solid salts will start to accumulate, and that will take away from the liquid capacity. Uh, so maybe every five years, we would take the pond out of operation, scrape out the salts to recover that capacity, uh, and then, uh, you can continue using the pond to its full capacity. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any more questions?
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep this one to the last one already, okay?
Okay. Close to the mic. Okay, so, another concern, we have a pond, it breaks, for whatever reason. Where's all that water gonna go? With the mission being adjacent to it and other adobe structures in the area. Where's all that water gonna go? Who's gonna take care of it? Have we done enough homework on that? Have we asked the right questions, the due diligence? Let me ask you this, because it is a pilot program. A pilot program, but you just heard five years. Correct, correct. If, if you were to have the ability to say, hey, we will approve this, and every three months, you guys as residents, get the ability to send in your concerns, your, your comments to where you guys come into public hearing or at city council, and you guys have the ability to say, it's not what we heard, it's not what we expected. It's something that would not even change your mind. Nope, because the reason, the reason being is if you look at that list I gave you, that took a lot of work to get that list out there. To be having to come in each time and to be having to get on the web and complain, and maybe we don't like the, the brine or the smell, or, or it's leaking water, or for whatever reason, do we really wanna be calling and having you guys change it? The answer is no. My time's very limited, just like yours is. For somebody else's, so I, I'm totally against it. Same? For you, sir?
My name is Rebecca Trujillo, and, uh, we are agriculture property owners here in Socorro. And my question is around taxes, and perhaps the answer comes from the central appraisal district. Uh, moving forward, and let's just say this becomes a huge success in small farmers, uh, or agricultural owners that, who, who already have a home on the property. And then now, because there's this reclassification that we approved, moving now what I presume would have been some kind of homestead tax, now it's been reclassified for agriculture for the purpose of the project. So, does this forfeit the taxes for homestead? And now, because there is a home there, does it all go to agricultural taxes?
Yeah, no, that would be something for central appraisal.
Yeah, central appraisal district, you can have, I believe, up to three homestead, uh, three exemptions on your property. So, homestead exemption would be one, the agricultural would be another.
And then disability or overage?
There are other types of exemptions that someone could apply for, for a property.
Because we know that agricultural taxes are much lower than homestead. So, I'm just asking the question if that is going to be...
Yeah, and that's a central appraisal district question.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay, so, we will, we will go ahead and, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and close public hearing. Okay. Ms. Lawyer, Mr. Estrada has a question, he'd like to ask you.
Do you have a question?
Oh, you have a question?
Do you have, there, do you have your main right?
Yes.
Do you have a, a main ditch or two access and do you, do you, do you use water?
In fact, we were the lead of getting that irrigation open to all the residents. We worked with Paso Water Utilities, Door Valley Water District, Tech Stock, because we didn't have irrigation. All those ditches, when they built all the residents, had been covered. So, we got that available to all the residents.
So, you got the ditches, you've got...
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you intend to grow grapes?
Right now, that is our plan to grow grapes. Whether it works or not, we don't know, but that's our plan right now.
Okay, um, so I heard that grapes have a high water... That's full of water? I don't, I don't know, but why, I guess white grapes are not another crop that doesn't be part of it, but water like, it's something...
So, we attended a conference in East Texas with, uh, Ma- uh, Mary Gonzalez. We were invited, and there was community members as well, two other farmers within the area. Pecans use a lot of water right now. So, they're looking for other alternatives of what to do with their farmlands.
I, I apologize, can you talk into the microphone, please?
Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, they're, they're looking for all, a lot of the farmers are looking for alternatives of what to do with their farmlands, because it's expensive, it's very expensive to be a farmer. So, we went to this, and, um, we talked about being what is called a vineyard. There's a term for it, to where if you grow, uh, vineyards in the community, you can turn around and sell it to wineries. We're not gonna get into the winery business. We just wanna grow the crop and sell it to, to wineries. That is a huge market for farmers right now. That benefits the farmers, especially if they're looking to replace what they're growing right now. And so, again, we're gonna try it. We're gonna try it. This whole area, back in the eighteen hundreds or even before, was a very area, a very big area for growing grapes. My father used to grow grapes as well, too, so it's, it's in there, it's in the soil. Uh, we feel like it could produce grapes. We're very small, we're not big farmers, so whatever we produce, we can sell it to the wineries, but we're not there yet. I mean, we're gonna give it a shot, we're gonna try it. If it doesn't work out with the grapes, then we'll still keep on growing other products as well, too. But knowing that we can grow products that will grow without all the salt. Because we checked with Texas A and M, uh, the only crops you can grow with saltwater is, um, pomegranates and dates. Everything else is gonna have problems. And to answer your question about the irrigation, our irrigation in our region is very dirty. We cannot use it by itself to grow products that you're gonna sell to the community. We would have to test it for E coli. So, we're, we're using city water right now.
Do you live on the smart?
Do we live on the property? No, no. We live down the street, at the other property, at the other farm. So, our plan is, if this works here, we would like to put one over there. But, it, like, I keep telling everybody, this is a pilot, this is a test. There's a lot of things that we have to do to get it going, there's a lot of things that we have to show to all the entities, all our data, we have to show weekly to make sure that we're in compliant. I mean, it's gonna be work, it's gonna be a lot of work.
So, I have a question, do you live in, anywhere you say you were a farmer and agricultural?
No, we have property in, in...
Okay, because you don't live in this.
I don't live in their farm, it's more, it's not this.
And so, uh, to the gentleman that brought the signatures, are all these signatures from the neighbors in Blackberry? Or, because I see some...
There's a picture reading in yellow on the map, on the zoning map. Each one of those residents I've reached out to, and almost all of them, with the exception of one or two, have signed that petition. Yes, plus, there's more from people that are, the, the father from the mission is on there. Al Borrego, which is a historian, well-known historian with the historic mission, is on there, and Paul Guerra, as I mentioned. So, it's not just the two hundred feet. I've actually gone past that and reached out to some of the other residents on Nevares.
Ready? Okay, so we're gonna close public hearing at eight fifty-six. Yeah, so, I am, I'm ready to make a motion. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve, and again, and this is just because T C Q is, is involved, and, again, they have to follow these guidelines and these rules, they have to, or else they'll be shut down and fined and, and, you know, it, it'll go downhill from there. So, I, I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
So, okay. Okay, so, the innovation, the new technology, whatever you want, okay, so, what if this was, um, solar panel farm? I'm used to it, the report that was the windmill farm? Was it these were, and this were?
We're gonna motion to...
You know, uh, cell phone, right? Um, the windmills and the, and the solar panels, you know, you can have, you can have people that are in the unit, and you can have people that are... That are against, you know, if they work, if they not work. But, we don't, we don't know.
So, there's, there's...
The cost to, to, you know, and I thought it for example, solar panels and, and... The cost to produce them and, and the product that they produce is worth the cost, right? And so, I mean, the same here, um... The other part I'm looking at is the longest signatures. Where people can be not in my backyard, right? So if it was in my backyard, I'd be there. I, I wouldn't want to be looking at something that you don't know what it's worth, long term, it's all. Such as solar panel. Farm can be. Right, um, if we can't have the signatures and the, like, the opposition. If I'm on that side, both of us, but I'm one of the first signatures, we're still gonna end it to it. It's not fun. It's not fun, right? Commission members don't listen, city council, and then city council. More people and we get pulled out. So that's.
I have an idea, if I may. Public hearing has been closed. Sorry. There's two things that we're voting on here, right? One is to rezone for A1 and the other one is for the conditional permit. Now, if I may, I would like to approve the rezoning request, but deny the approval of the conditional use permit for no desalination. And then they can retry or go to it later on.
It'll, it would go to city council.
Correct, and then at that, and then after that. Because we would only be rezoning the property at that point to agricultural, which is, it's already yes. But we're denying the conditional use permit for the desalination. That would be my motion.
Yeah, that, that's a possibility and one thing I might just double check is sometimes the applicant, they have two things in one thing. So if they don't get one thing, then they not want to rezone, so it's up to you guys to maybe check the applicant. If they still are interested in rezoning.
Okay.
But if they're like, well, if I don't get one, I don't want the other, then you can deny both.
Okay.
But yeah, because if they still want it, A1 regardless of.
And again, just because this is important, just because the signatures of the residents are.
I absolutely agree because, I mean, she's already a farm owner. I mean, I know it's something about the farm. So the farm is already there. She's already irrigated. She's already, uh, grown stuff. And she's already a residential, so it would all be right, given her the, the, uh, the ability to go to the farm and probably.
But deny the condition.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Loia?
Uh, that's a tough question. Yes, I will take the A1, but.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Given the option, right? I would like to have the A1. In my best interest and the community and the farmers, we would need both. One thing I wanted to state that, um, we are looking at technology to advance farmers. Right? We have, we've have, have had three pilot projects from interns from UTIP to do projects on the farm, on the other farm, that has to do with technologies. Drones, sensors, and the reason for that is to address labor. Labor is very expensive, just like water. Using city water is real expensive. So the sensors help us in the water, the drone helps us in the labor. We're looking at things and we're not just doing it for ourselves. We're doing it for the small farm in the community so that they can advance to and keep farming. Because there, there is interest. We have people that come and ask us, hey, where can I find a piece of property where I can farm? And so the pilot project that we're talking about just adds to ways that keeps these small, small farmers alive. That's the goal. Yeah, there's benefits for us because if we can use our well water, we don't have to be paying so much money for city water.
Okay, thank you. So.
There's a motion on the table, so.
I will continue with my motion of approving the rezoning to A1, but denying the approval of the conditional use permit, and that is okay with Ms. Loia?
Well, it's not okay, but.
But that's the option we have.
It's my only option right now.
That, that gives you another opportunity, since it was amended, to bring it in again to city council, but we gotta come to a decision at this point.
So what I have to do is.
Well, no, it will automatically go to city council.
Correct, and then.
With their recommendation, with staff's recommendation. And.
And, and, and I want to address this.
Do you want to move my mic?
I want to address the signatures. Yes, you can go get fifty, you can get a hundred, you can have two hundred signatures, but do they have the facts in front of them?
That is the problem. Nobody has the facts.
Well.
Yeah, but there's a lot of questions in the air and I can tell you, as a resident, I wouldn't want to fund next to my property.
And that's fair.
And it's, it's a tough, as a farmer, it's a very tough decision, believe me. But that's what we're here for, you know, it's, uh, I'm all for it, but then I also care for the residents. But you have another shot.
And, and that's fair, that's fair, but what I'm trying to say is if everyone had the facts, maybe there would have only been ten, ten signatures or fifteen versus fifty. That's my concern, right? That if we're basing it on that and we have a presentation tomorrow and I've already been told that they're not gonna show up. That's my concern. Three o'clock?
Three to five, three to six thirty.
And it's on your clock?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Do I have a second for the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried.
Item number twelve, considering take action on the proposed approval of preliminary plat and final plat for the Socorro Logistics Mesa Spur Drain Number One subdivision being a portion of Mesa Spur Drain with block four and five, Socorro Grant, Socorro, Texas. Ms. Camino?
Thank you. Item number twelve. Request for approval of a preliminary plat and final plat for the Socorro Logistics Mesa Spur Drain Number One subdivision being a portion of Mesa Spur Drain within block four and five of the Socorro Grant here in Socorro, Texas. The property is located, uh, the former Mesa Spur Drain within the Socorro Logistics Distribution Center. A portion of Mesa Spur Drain, block four and five, Socorro Grant, has been decommissioned by the El Paso County Water Improvement District, Number One. The property owner is Socorro Logistics Land Two LLC. Their representative, CEA Group, uh, is present, Mr. Jorge Grajeza, is present to answer any questions. The property is four point seven nine acres in size. It is currently zoned unclassified as it is, uh, set to be heard by city council for approval based on your recommendation at a previous planning and zoning meeting. Uh, the Socorro twenty forty future land use maps, uh, designates this area as, I think, I believe that's incorrect. It is designated as ICE, uh, industrial commercial. Uh, planning and zoning staff recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat for the Socorro Logistics, Logistics Mesa Spur Drain Number One subdivision. As previously mentioned, the property is located within the Socorro Logistics, uh, center. Oh, going the wrong way. Uh, it is zoned unclassified. At a previous meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for the rezoning, that a case will be heard at the next city council meeting for, uh, for final action. The aerial shows the location of the applicant property. And these are photographs taken of the applicant property from Socorro Logistics Lane, uh, on top and from Nuevo Ojo Tanks Boulevard on the bottom. This is the preliminary plat. And the final plat for Socorro Logistics Mesa Spur, uh, Number One. Uh, this is the survey of the property. And we are missing the development schedule, but the property will be developed and, uh, sold to assist in the development of the adjacent We Win, uh, new commercial, uh, development, which was recently, uh, in the news of a large facility manufacturing, uh, matured, uh, operation for data center equipment. And with that, staff can answer any questions as well as the representative, Mr. Grajeza, who is also in attendance today. For the rezoning to ICMUD.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Andrew Royo, second by Osvaldo Ressa to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Item number, number thirteen, considering take action on the proposed approval of a preliminary plat with a variance request from section forty-six dash four-one-six, high restrictions to allow a maximum, maximum building height of fifty feet instead of the forty-five requirement for the Socorro Logistics Center Unit Five subdivision being a portion of track four and eight A, all of seven A and a portion of Mesa Spur Drain, all within block five and all of lot one, block two, Socorro Logistics Center Unit Two, Socorro, Texas. Ms. Camino?
Uh, thank you, Marian. Item number thirteen is, uh, the approval of a preliminary plat in the vicinity of the previous, uh, application item. This is for, uh, the property owner, Socorro Logistics Lands Two LLC. Representative, CEA Group, Socorro Logistics Lands Two LLC. The property is thirty-two point one-nine acres in size and portion of it is zoned unclassified. Another portion is ICMUD. It is currently vacant and the future land use map for the city of Socorro designates the area as industrial commercial mixed use. Uh, in summary, the request is for approval of a preliminary plat and variance request for the Socorro Logistics Center Unit Five subdivision. The variance is for a, uh, the building height. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat and variance request for Socorro Logistics Center Unit Five, uh, Unit Five subdivision. This is a location map showing the location of the property within the Socorro Logistics Center. Uh, the zoning map shows the ICMUD zoning district in purple, the gray unclassified. The outlined red shows the portion of this subdivision, uh, request. The aerial map shows the vacant property and the, uh, surrounding properties. The view of the property from Socorro Logistics Lane on top and the view from Nuevo Ojo Tanks on the bottom. Uh, this, this is the preliminary plat, again for Socorro Logistics Center, Unit Five. And with that, staff can answer any questions. Mr.?
How does it affect or how does it benefit going from forty-five to fifty feet, just out of curiosity? Or is that just something that is outdated and now all buildings are fifty feet or?
Good afternoon, Chair, uh, members of the commission, Jorge Grajeza with CEA Group. Uh, to answer that question, it's just to be comparable to the, to the existing buildings that are already there.
But there's no benefit or effect at all?
There is. Um, I'm not, I'm not too sure on the specifics. That's more on the, on the architectural um, and the tenants as far as, you know, distribution, storage heights. Uh, but that's very comparable to what they've already, uh, the market that's, 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 uh, been at the actual site right now, the product.
Did you know? I didn't, I didn't know why it made a difference. But yeah, for stacking with the fortress, I'm assuming right.
I tell you, um, have a, does it, do you have a workup, right, that you're sort of height and so you need to come more, be a minimum, that it was seven feet and?
Uh.
Or that, if your product, that's what you needed and it's not the inch left.
I think I answered.
Yeah, there's, there's clearance based on the product that they come in with.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Nobody has any questions? No? Like to make a motion to approve?
I have a motion made by Andrew Royo, second by Julio Dominguez to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, considering take action on the approval of a, of a replat for Haciendas del Valle Unit Two subdivision replat G being a replat of lot four, block seven, Haciendas del Valle Unit Two subdivision located at three, three zero one Valle Rojo Drive, Socorro, Texas. Ms. Camino?
Thank you. Item number fourteen is the request for approval of a replat for Hacienda del Valle Unit Two replat G subdivision. This is a replat of lot four, block seven, Hacienda del Valle. The property, uh, is located at three oh one Valle Rojo Road Drive. And the property owner, Jose Esmeralda Girón. Their representative, Luis J. Hernandez, innovated with style. Uh, and their representative is on the, uh, call. If you should have any questions for, for them. The property is point eight, point four-eight-seven-four acres. It is zoned R-one and currently residential. In summary, the request is for approval of a replat for Haciendas del Valle Unit Two replat G and staff recommends approval of the replat. The property is located at the corner there on Va- Valle Rojo Drive. It is surrounded by R-one, single-family residential development. And currently, the property has a single-family home. These are views of the property from Valle Rojo Drive. Sorry, I apologize. There are two homes. This replat simply, uh, separates the, the lot into two for the two properties. And with that, uh, staff can answer any questions. Again, the representative, uh, Mr. Jaime Luis is on the phone as well.
Well, that's like, do, do existing homes on one park? And they're trying to split it up to one place.
Probably separate ownership. I don't know the details of how the two homes ended up on the one lot.
More likely that they.
If I may, this is Jaime Gallo, professional engineer with Gekka YALO, representing the owner. So the, the property has been in the Girón, Girón family since nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, to be frankly, I don't know what point they ended up with two residences on the property. It's a half-acre lot. This is just kind of cleaning things up. It's a pretty straightforward lots bit. And, uh, just to end up with two quarter-acre lots. The intent of the family is to maintain occupying the property. The daughter lives in one home and the, uh, original owner lives in the other.
Do you, do you have existing, uh, are your, are your meters separate, your water meter or gas and, uh, electric meter?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, yeah, I, I believe you asked if it's metered separately?
Yeah, do you kind of have separate meters for your children?
I believe, I believe electric is metered separately. Um, I need to confirm with you, but I believe they only have one water meter at this point.
Yeah, if, if it's one lot, I think, I don't, I don't think utilities would give you, would give you separate meters. Once it's. Right. Well, I'm ready to.
And if you look at the, across the, uh, I guess, two houses behind or two properties behind, across the street, they've already kind of done the same thing as well. It was another corner lot, half-acre property. They split, at some point, they split it into two quarter acres.
Okay.
And so.
I have a motion made.
I have a motion made by Yolanda Rodriguez, second by Julio Dominguez to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Item number four, item number 14, planning and zoning commissioners' report?
I don't have anything. I'd like to say thank you to David and to Mr. Ressa for meeting with all those, um, homeowners and stuff like that. I know you guys took up a lot of your time and stuff, so thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you. And no, and to the other members of the committee, Mr. Carrasco, Mr. Perez, and then to Mr. Serna, right?
Alejo.
Alejo, Serna, Siera. Thank you very much for all the assistance. But that's, uh, he was just presenting his case, and there's nothing in the ordinance that says that they have to be, that they, that's just the, the, his approach to, to his petition was to build a case for it. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you. Item number 15, 15, planning and zoning department report. Ms. Kimito?
Thank you, Marian. I just have one, two updates on area projects. The traffic signals at North Loop and Bowman are still on pause, but at least we have a reason for why. There was some discrepancies in the planned sets that were provided to the, um, the contractor, and they asked for a time suspension in order to review those. And they have, the tech doc has, um, shared that with us and, and told us that there is no timeline currently for when our traffic signals will start, but at least that was a response. And a project on Socorro Road for sidewalks and traffic improvements, safety improvements, uh, between Belen and Win Road. That should be starting at the end of October. That has already been awarded to Horizon Construction. And soon, you will be seeing social media posts to make people aware of the, uh, traffic, uh, changes on Socorro Road as we work through that project. It was a safety improvement project, so where there are going to be enhancements to streetlights, uh, traffic signs, an installation of a monitoring speed tracker, so that folks can be aware of their speed as they, uh, travel along Socorro Road. A raised, uh, um, section on Belen, where it meets Socorro Road. Currently, uh, a wide opening on Belen does cause a little confusion. And we look forward to seeing that develop, and...
And it's from, from, sorry, from Belen to where?
Win, Win Road. And that should begin at the end of, end of Oc, October. And then, just a fun, exciting event, I believe, that takes place October 24th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, in combination with, uh, various departments. Our city is opening up Rio Vista for Fright Forum and National Night Out. Encourage everyone to attend and bring their families for a great event with a lot of entertainment, uh, candy for the kids, and an opportunity to meet with all of the different levels of law enforcement that keep our citizens safe. With that, I'll end my, uh, department report.
Item number 16, considering take action on the adjournment of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
I have a motion made by Andrew Royo, second by Oswaldo Ressa to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion, motion carry, meeting adjourned at 9:23 PM. Thank you.